Okay, well, welcome everybody to the planning session of Wednesday, June 3rd. We have a treat tonight. We're going to have a special presentation prepared for us by the students of Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. And I think, Sean, you're going to be introducing the students and their project.
Yes, and good evening Planning Commissioners, Sean Nicholas, Associate Planner. It is with great pleasure that I introduce representatives of the graduate class working on the southernmost portion of South El Camino Real here in town. So I know they've been working very hard and excited to be here. Throughout this process, that working with this class, I've been able to talk to a lot of the residents down in the neighborhoods, down in this area. And one of the things they'd asked me most about, you know, the goals of the project and so on and so forth. And, you know, I talked to them about the Centennial General Plan, the Goals and Policies, and the Bike Pedestrian Master Plan, and all these great tools and processes we've gone through and updated, and would be given to the students to kind of use as a framework and a starting point in terms of developing these recommendations. But I also talked to them about this is an opportunity for them to start a conversation about this, you know, portion of our community. And it's not a conversation that's going to be answered quickly or overnight, but it's an opportunity to start a conversation. I will tell you that of all the things that I tell them, they're just very excited about that, that we're talking about this area. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Vicente Del Rio.
And before Vicente Del Rio begins, Sean suggested that we hold our questions until the presentation is complete. And then we can dig into the questions at that time.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Vicente Del Rio. I'm a professor at the City Regional Planning Department, Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. Thank you for having us here. It's a, it's a pleasure and an honor to be able to show you this humble vision for South El Camino Real. Thank you, Jim Petrus, for trusting in us. And thank you, Sean, for all the help that he could get us. And this was a very fun and arduous, how do we, sorry.
Oh, here we go.
All right, thanks. All right. So this was a less than 10-week, very intense class. We have one more week to finish the report that we're going to give you. But it's important to say that the, our master's program is a professional degree, so we have students from all backgrounds. We have environmental scientists, we have geographers, historians, architects. So it's a very mixed, interesting group of people. And they worked very hard. I normally work them very hard. They complain all the time for my, but anyway, and I haven't given them a grade yet, so that's another stage of their presentation. But, so they worked very hard. And we went through a series of stages. We started with the on-site data collection. Actually, before that, they got all the documentation and plans they could put their hands on about the city, the Centennial General Plan, everything else. Then we went on the site for a couple of days to collect data. We did what we call SWOT analysis. You're going to be explained about that later. We did a very lengthy site analysis. We had online survey for a month. We received 128 responses, if I'm not mistaken. Sean held a community survey, excuse me, a community session, a workshop, where he got some more comments. We also went on to study some successful experiences, similar projects in the States. Then we came up with a vision for South El Camino Real, concept, ideas, and finally the proposal. So without extending myself further, I'll introduce Jeremy, who's going to be talking about the next section. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicente Commissioners. So before we could begin creating this vision for South El Camino Real, we decided to do data collection and data analysis. And so we went to San Clemente for two days, and we broke into three groups. The first group studied the city, and they went around the city and collected surveys at several locations. Most of the surveys were collected at Talega, the pier, and farmer's market on Sunday. We wanted to get a different, a variety of responses and a range of age groups. Twenty-three interviews were performed. They all had the same survey instrument, and so the questions were all the same, and we could basically use the data for analysis. This is an example of a few of the surveys. The age range obviously is very different. We have a 15-year-old and a 27-year-old there, among others. And so they had many ideas for South El Camino Real. They wanted more healthier options in a market. Right now, it's currently sort of a food desert. They also wanted more architectural styles. They wanted to add a little more variety, more restaurants. They wanted it to remain low-key, small-scale, more amenities like picnic tables, barbecues, showers for maybe surfers at trestles or coming-from-trestles, more mixed uses, and art and murals to activate that vibrant artist community that's there. The next group went around the district, which is the neighborhoods between Avenida Magdalena and Carl's Jr., so basically the entire triangle. And they did surveys throughout the area, several of them in Spanish. There are a lot of Spanish speakers in the area. And we had 29 interviews performed there. They referred to the neighborhood as the trestles neighborhood. That's the identity that they had. And here's just an example of some of the responses. We had images for them to respond to and rate. The most disliked architectural style was like a modern style. They thought it might not fit in too well. You know, they liked the beach style, or what they called a beach style. Ninety percent of the users are there every day because they were locals from the district. And most of them generally liked El Camino Real, South El Camino Real. Only a few didn't like it. And so here's some of the highlights. Again, they wanted a grocery store or more healthier options for food, a reduction of the noise from I-5, better lighting for more nighttime safety, as well as another park, possibly, safer ways to cross El Camino Real. Currently, it's four ways, or four lanes, excuse me. And just a safer environment for bikers, children who cross the street or cross I-5 from the elementary school, community garden, just more inviting and a better place for children. And the third group actually studied the corridor itself, El Camino Real between Avenida Magdalena and Carl's Jr. And the corridor conducted, they didn't actually interview anyone. They did a survey of the lots that were there, and basically looked at the onsite conditions, which buildings were sort of in need of maybe fixing up or replacement. They looked at the sidewalk conditions, and as well as the alley conditions behind El Camino Real, Del Comercio. There are 68 lots in the area, at least in our, our study area. And then we also performed a walkability survey, and that uses certain urban design guidelines to judge or at least critique an area. And so, for example, one of them is imageability, which is generally the attractiveness of a site. And we found that while the ocean is a major landscape feature and it's very attractive, it's barely visible on most of the site. There aren't very many good views of the ocean. There are no plazas or parks or courtyards for people to use, so very little actual public space besides the right-of-way. There is barely any dining space that's outdoors except for at Carl's Jr. and Cafe Del Sol. There are very few memorable buildings. There aren't many landmarks for people to actually be attracted to. Enclosure is the degree that people are, you know, feel safe in an environment. Having more shade structures or other vertical elements make them feel like they're in an outdoor room. Right now, there isn't very good enclosure, obviously, because we have I-5 on one side. Development is focused on only one side. There's a wide street, several undeveloped lots, large setbacks on many of the sites, and just insufficient landscaping trees. Human scale is how much humans can use the site rather than just automobile traffic. It's about architectural details that can be viewed while walking as a pedestrian rather than as a car. You know, signs that cater towards automobiles are larger and more visible. And so it's got very long sightlines, which is actually not very good for human scale. It lacks easily recognizable markers, and there's barely any street furniture for pedestrians. There's only a handful of benches, a handful of trashcans. Most of the, most of the RTA or OCTA bus stops have no shelter, no benches. And then transparency is how much humans can perceive other human activity. There are some stores there, but you can't really see inside. There's no outdoor dining. And there's very few windows that actually look onto the street. And so it kind of looks a bit like a ghost town. And complexity is the visual richness of a place. So how much variety there is, how much just interesting stuff there is to look at in a site, and how much articulation there is to the buildings. So they need a combination of just more different types of densities, just the variety of building massing. There isn't as much street art, and, you know, there's an artist community there. There could definitely be more. And there's inconsistent streetscape. The sidewalk is very narrow at some places, very wide at others. And so in addition to this onsite data gathering, we had an online survey, as Vicente mentioned. We had 128 respondents in the month that it was up online. Here's an example of a website we also created. This website featured the project as it was in progress, and people were allowed to leave comments and feedback there as well. So here's the online survey. Here's an example of some of the questions we asked. We provided them with images with which to rate, and they rated car and pedestrian-oriented higher than, say, solely pedestrian or solely automobile. Architectural styles, we gave them a couple images. Unsurprisingly, they really liked California Mission. This is the Spanish village by the sea. People were asked why they go to South El Camino Real, mainly to eat at Carl's Jr. or Cafe Del Sol, or to surf. So those are unsurprisingly the largest responses. And how often do people go? Most of the respondents either live there or go there regularly for surfing or to grab some fast food. And this is a chart of what people most wanted to see in the South El Camino Real, if we could make changes. And so they wanted more eateries mainly, a coffee or a tea shop. Currently, there isn't any. And maybe a farmer's market, more public space, chances for public art. Again, there is that artist community. And a community garden, possibly. Those are the most appropriate. And then here are some word clouds. These are words that came up the most frequently in questions that weren't just multiple choice. These were very free-form answers. And so what did people like least about South El Camino Real was the congestion, the traffic, the development, how much noise there were. On these diagrams, the larger words were the ones that appeared most often. And what did people like most about the area? The beach, the small scale, the community, the people there. Here are some of the public comments that were placed on our website. Very supportive, had some good information, good ideas, very constructive. And then there was also a public meeting that was held by Sean Nicholas. And here are some of the public comments, talking about how much traffic there were, there was, more places for children to play, the need for a grocery store, again, is very critical for the area. And they also wanted to narrow the road. So we'll reference a road diet several times. So after we gathered all this data, after we had all these comments, we conducted a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threat analysis, what Vicente called the SWOT analysis. Strengths and weaknesses are the factors that are present in the site that are good or bad, which we can work on. And then opportunities and threats are things, are factors that are external to the site, which we could maybe activate or try and reduce their impact on the site. So a major opportunity would be something like the amount of schoolchildren that might use the site crossing from the elementary school. This is a full version of the SWOT analysis. Basically, we looked at the economic analysis of the area, the socio-cultural aspects of the area, the built environment, the circulation, and the land use. So we looked at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats for all of these. And so now we have Paul, who will have the vision.
Good evening. So building off of that portion of our analysis and the community input, our team developed vision, goals, as well as objectives, and a final design proposal for the corridor. First off, the vision statement that we developed for the corridor, building off of this analysis and public input, was that the South El Camino Real corridor will serve as the southern gateway to San Clemente and a vibrant mixed-use neighborhood center that fosters community interaction and economic vitality. The street will provide a safe, comfortable, and appealing environment for people walking, biking, driving, or using transit. South El Camino Real will be an inviting and walkable corridor that reflects the culture and character of the community and enhances the quality of life in the neighborhood. And building off of that, that really influenced the goals, which we also incorporated into our analysis, as you'll see lots of the same terms used. And we identified these terms and principles as qualities of strong neighborhoods, strong walkable neighborhoods that have a good quality of life. And so these eight urban design principles were then translated into objectives, which you can see up here as well, that we identified. And then building off of those objectives, those really informed our design. Here is an initial sort of design concept that we developed in the early stages shortly after doing the SWOT analysis. And this is the north section of the corridor. And we talked a lot about having landmarks, gateways entering the neighborhood. We discussed a meandering roadway or other traffic calming measures that might make the area more walkable and pleasant. We also talked about public spaces, parks, activities, and how to better connect them with the neighborhood and with the South El Camino Real corridor. Obviously, the pedestrian bridge is a huge focus point, and became very key in our design, as well as the southern gateway, which we thought was a great opportunity site that could be built off of. And building off of that, this leads us to our more final design proposal, which is split into two segments. And as you can see, the northern gateway, there's a planted median. We talk about pedestrian passageways that might connect the corridor with the park behind this neighborhood, as well as angled parking to maintain the number of spaces where people can park while still increasing the area for pedestrians, as well as a Class 1 bikeway, bidirectional, allowing bikes to go both directions, as well as increasing space for pedestrians. Updates to the pedestrian bridge design proposal also considers a community center, which would sort of serve as the anchor point for the community, as well as improvements to the sound wall, parklets to increase pedestrian activity, and narrowing the roadway somewhat, and considering a mid-size parking garage to deal with parking concerns at the south end of the corridor. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Sherman, who will talk a little bit more about the design elements in our three focus areas.
Commissioners, as Paul had mentioned, our goal is to increase the connections to South El Camino Real, the district. These are a couple ways that we intend to do so. We'd like to create a welcoming gateway sculpture, redesign the existing pedestrian bridge, improve, definitely improve safety in the alleys, provide multiple options for streetscape design, enhance park-trail connections, and create inventory of street furniture. This here is an example of a gateway monument that would be placed at the north and south ends of the South El Camino Real district. We feel that this monument embraces the surf identity of the area and the culture. And this is on the south end. The prior one was to the north. During our analysis, our team recognized a need for improvement in the alleys. Listed here are a couple of the current uses, as well as some of the proposed uses. We'd like to incorporate a retractable bollard system to block vehicle traffic during high pedestrian activities, which will be controlled by the community, with an emphasis on providing safety for children to play in the alley, and possibly serve as a community space that can host events such as farmer's markets, street fairs, or art exhibitions. This is an example, or is actually an image of an alley in the district. And as you can see, the primary uses are for vehicle maintenance, parking, and there's not much pedestrian traffic. And we feel we can definitely take advantage of these alleys and connections. This is an image of what we'd hope the alley to look like. As you can see, there's traffic calming pavement, paving. There's a small speed bump. It also creates a sense of enclosure that Jeremy talked about, creating safety. And there's not that many cars in the alley itself. This is a rendered image of a section of the alley in the district. It's a plan view, as you can see, and we have the traffic calming paving, pavement, as well as increased landscaping for better aesthetics. This is an example of the retractable bollards that we'd hope the community, the members themselves, would be able to control, as I said before, possibly for farmer's markets, and to definitely increase safety when children are playing or high pedestrian activity. And then as we touched on before, the pedestrian bridge is definitely something that our team addressed. Speaking with the public, they mentioned that the bridge itself was a big concrete utilitarian, scary, and noisy, you know, point to get over the 5 freeway. On the left is an image of the pedestrian bridge as it is, as it stands now. On the right is a rendered image of what we designed the bridge and hoped that it would look like in the future. And this is a shot on the left, as it is now. As you can see, there's no sense of enclosure. It's very open. It's scary for children. The one on the right provides a covered membrane, covered plexiglass or glass, and a new surface on the bottom to walk on. This is what it'd look like planted. This is a long shot view. It shows the translucent membrane, as well as the plants, and as well as the boards that would line the bottom of the bridge. This right here is facing south on South El Camino Real. And as you can see, we've taken advantage of the ramp and opened that up into a larger node for pedestrian, for more public uses. And we've added a "Thanks for Visiting San Clemente" sign on the bridge itself to serve as another gateway, if you will. This is the shot looking, heading south on South El Camino Real. And in this shot, you can see the sound, the redesigned sound wall that mimics waves. You can see the extended sidewalk with the two bike paths, once again, serving as a street diet and allowing for more public uses. The mimicking of the waves and all those different nodes along the wall would lend themselves to the idea of incorporating public art along the wall. These here, well, I'm going to show you four examples of cross-sections that we've designed. This one here depicts the angled parking. On the right is the sound wall with the extended sidewalk with landscaping, two bike lanes, and a pedestrian walkway. And as you see, the, the road itself is thinned, and both sidewalks are made bigger for better walkability purposes. Here is what would be on the northern section of South El Camino Real, with a median, a place we could, we could put the welcoming gateway structure. And similar to the other ones, we do have extended space along the wall for more walkability and more pedestrian purposes and public space. And here's another, this is another example, except it's now on the other side, as you saw in our design concepts. The street meanders a little bit to calm traffic, except on this side, we have more public space. That would be on the development side. And this is the same thing, just on the, on an alternate view. In those areas of the extended sidewalk, we'd hope to put pocket parks or parklets. And the ones on top are residentially oriented, and the, on the bottom commercially oriented, such as outdoor eateries and more seating space. And with that, we hope to encourage pedestrian activities as well as And with that, we hope to encourage pedestrian activities, as well as increase the viability of the street by providing space for amenities, as I mentioned, and promote storefront businesses. And now, I will pass it on to Anna Conni, and she will talk about neighborhood connections. Thank you.
So on our site, we saw the opportunity to create further pedestrian and cyclist connections from Avenida Magdalena to the left, to Avenida San Luis Rey on the right, as well as from the park down to South El Camino Real. The connection proposes to enhance connectivity while offering recreational opportunities, as well as their amenities, like trash cans, doggy bags, and water fountains. The render on the left shows a path through a city easement towards the park, and the image on the right portrays a connection where Calle del Comercio turns towards South El Camino Real. It shows the change on, of street material that will serve to signal the drivers that there are potential crossings. This perspective shows the connection towards Avenida Magdalena from the parking area of San Luis Rey Park, and further into a park, the parking lot where we decided would be the best site for the farmer's market, and connecting it through Avenida San Luis Rey. Here's an example of lighting that's strong enough to illuminate for the pedestrians using the area, but will not interfere with the adjacent commu, I mean, the adjacent residences to the south, I mean, to the west. Here are examples of the steps that will accommodate the gray change of the city easements. These serve to portray the community's identity by using mosaics done by the local artists. And on the right, we see an example of an ADA compliant project. And these are just examples of the street furniture that will help the neighborhood with its identification. And next up, we have the anchors proposed by.
Great. So in our analysis, we found three areas that could serve as, as focus points or anchors for the community. We looked first at the north gateway at Avenida Magdalena and South El Camino Real, near the municipal golf course, and then the community core, where the pedestrian bridge is located right now, and then finally at the south gateway, at the Tressles parking lot and the Carl's Jr. So we're just going to go through a bit about each of those anchor points. So first, we have the north gateway, and this is the site plan. We propose bowl bouts along the intersection to create more pedestrian space, as well as creating a stop sign here. Currently, it goes straight through, but using the paved crosswalks, we can create more pedestrian space here. The planted medians serve as a traffic calming measure, as well as an entrance to the gateway for the corridor, as well as others have mentioned, the class-one bike lane on the west side of the street, near the sound wall. So this is a rendering of the gateway sign, which Sherman mentioned earlier, and this would invite pedestrians and visitors to the project area, to the corridor, and serve as a, an entrance point. This is consistent also with the Centennial General Plan, which focuses on a architectural gateway in the land use element. Here's another rendering of the north gateway anchor. As you can see, the sound wall, we have the improved bike lane. Currently, there's tennis courts on the second story, and there's a parking garage underneath right now on that property. We propose potentially a pushback of the parking garage for more commercial space in that area to activate the sidewalk a bit more. And we also discussed the idea of using that revenue from the commercial spaces, leasing it for the, for the property, the apartment building adjacent to the tennis courts. Here's another rendering looking north. And currently, on the corner lot here, we have a one-story auto dealership, but we're looking potentially to have a mixed-use development. So moving into the center of the community, we have the community core anchor, where the pedestrian bridge is located. As others mentioned earlier, the, the idea of improvements to the pedestrian bridge would serve as an anchor to the community. Commercial space on the north and south side of the bridge would also activate the area a bit more, as well as the idea of a community center, which would serve as a focus point for communities involving children, perhaps activities, because it is so close to Concordia Elementary School. This would serve as a, an opportune place for community activities, specifically for children. So here's a rendering of the community core area with the community center. As you can see in the background, the pedestrian bridge. We also discussed the idea of a business incubator space in, within the community center to help foster new businesses in the area and potentially create classes for people who would like to create more business in the area. Here's another rendering of the community core. A great concern, as was mentioned earlier, was a shortage of grocery stores or food and services here, so we proposed a market on the north side of San Dimas, as you can see here. And then finally, we looked at the south gateway, which is currently the Carl's Jr. parking lot, as well as the Tressles Neighborhood Parking Lot, and this sits right along the county line. So we proposed a mid-size parking garage, which would deal with the traffic congestion during the weekends. Many residents were concerned about this. Currently, parking on the weekends goes all the way up to the freeway entrance a lot of the time, so we, we wanted to look at trying to create improvements for that. We also discussed the idea of a surfer's plaza, or more amenities for surfers and hikers at Camp Pendleton, and a place for them to stop by. We also wanted to promote public transit use in the area, and so we proposed a transit hub, which is currently served by three bus lines, and then also a space for restaurants and cafes, potentially. So here are a few more renderings, just the ideas of creating more amenities for surfers and hikers in the area, the transit hub, as well as the mid-size parking garage. We did an analysis of the existing parking spots, which is around 156. That's both the Tressles parking lot, as well as the Carl's Jr. parking lot, and with the proposed mid-size parking garage, we've increased that to 300-plus spaces. And then we also knew that there was a large art community in the area, and so we suggested the idea of a art center within this plaza as well. And so with that, Jeremy is going to talk about some of the architectural guidelines.
So in the plan, there was a desire to create what was called a surf architecture. And we thought, as a group, that there was no one architectural style that was, that could be called surf architecture. And so in our two days spent in San Clemente gathering data, we looked around and we saw an eclectic mix of architecture, given that this is a historic town that has grown throughout the century. And so we found that surf architecture or beach architecture was really a culmination of different styles working together. And so we proposed a mix of different architectural styles, obviously Spanish colonial and mission to conform with the Spanish village by the sea, contemporary or a modern beach kind of architecture, you know, the, the white, smooth lines, clean, glazing, a lot of, you know, a lot of glass. The atomic ranch style is sort of like the 50s ranch-style home, the California-style home, with the low roof line, the, the really long roof with a glazing and wood materials, you know, pastel colors. It's very, it's very nice architecture, which we see a lot of in San Clemente. The Polynesian style, obviously surfing has its roots in Polynesian culture, as well as the fact that there is a new residential project going in that has a Polynesian style, because we spoke to the architect when we visited. And then finally, a seaside slash fishing village architectural style, to bring that nautical theme into the beach architecture, and so more kind of pastel colors, white, wood construction, a very small-scale cottage feel. And then a unified color palette and scheme would add to cohesiveness. Obviously, every building would not be the same color. There would be articulation by varying the colors and varying the accent colors. We'll specify materials that improve attractiveness and conform to our color palette and the Currently, in the general plan, the Centennial General Plan, the land use is zoned as mixed-use, just mixed-use MU5, and it has a affordable housing overlay. And currently, it's only one use per lot allowed, and we would like to see the ability to have multiple uses per lot, as the community wanted a mixed-use development. And so we could allow for multiple uses on a lot. However, we did identify that the existing uses sort of biased towards different sides. The northern side by Avenida Magdalena and the golf course is more residential. There are a lot more homes there, and there is the apartment complex. And then on the south side by Carl's Jr., you have more shops, like the Rip Curl Outlet, Tacos de El Sol, et cetera. And so we decided that if a development was to go in that is only single use, they have to bias towards a residential side or a commercial side, if they are residential or commercial, because that would be more appropriate. And so other than that, though, mixed-use, that is, multiple uses per lot, is encouraged. And so here are some, you know, images of this architectural styles. We're all familiar with Spanish colonial. It's very attractive. You know, we are the Spanish village by the sea again. Here are some pictures of the contemporary slash modern. You see several of these homes throughout San Clemente, and they do manage to fit in. They don't stand out like a sore thumb, like in some communities. And so you have extensive glazing, you have interesting forms, and nice colors that will conform to our color palette. Here is some images of the atomic or 50s-style ranch home. Again, you got the pastel colors, you got carports, possibly, which could translate to maybe porches and outdoor dining instead of a carport, but still keep that architectural element. You have the long, low roof line and the extensive glazing, as well as wood material. Here we have Polynesian-style homes. You have that triangular shape, which sort of mimics the traditional Polynesian architecture. You have those wide, open patios or logias or, you know, breezeways. And yeah, definitely a beach style of architecture. And then here you have seaside, again, more, kind of smaller-scale cottagey, very intimate, attractive, good-looking, again, with a pastel or a white color palette. Here we have a couple architectural details. In the final document, we speak at length about how doorways and entryways would look, how they would be accented, how they would be trimmed, what kind of lighting elements would be used. There was the possibility of having a bell-shaped lighting fixture. We were, sent an email about that. And then how the lighting would work with like stairways and just allowing for more safety at night, as well as accenting certain architectural details. Numbering and lettering, we wanted to avoid neon or large, like marquee kind of letters. We wanted it to be a little bit more lower scale. And so a unifying numbering or lettering style that's small and attractive is encouraged. Onings would be used to break up long building facades. They would help to add more shade, as well as to provide a place for more trim or accent colors. Signage, again, we want to avoid large, marquee-type signage, and we want to avoid having signs that don't fit in with the building facade. So in many cities, you know, a Walgreens sign, which would normally be red, could be turned to a color that matches the building facade and doesn't stand out. Facade elements, we want to break up, again, large building facades with maybe a second skin or a different kind of variations in the sizes and scale. Perhaps green walls could be allowed on, on unbroken building facades. There are great places for murals, again, to encourage that art, artist community, as well as maybe tiles, again, for that Spanish style. And so thank you very much for your time. Please visit our website, secrproject.net. Any questions for the class?
Well, I think first, just to speak for the commissioners, I want to say you've done a wonderful job. This is a very comprehensive approach to a very complex area. You know, I, I think there were a number of things that were really inventive that you've chosen to do. For myself, I know I was really struck by the meandering pathway, the surfer plaza, I thought was a really interesting idea, the community plaza. I thought it was interesting that you had the varied types of architecture, rather than selecting one type of architecture, but have, having unifying features, such as the color palette, or signage, or some of the details. Just a really, really well-done job. At this point, I think the other commissioners would all like to share their thoughts with you, and then hopefully, we have just a couple of minutes at the end for members of the community to speak, if they'd like to react to the, the plan as well. Wayne?
Great job. Thank you very, very much. Terrific. If we go to your website, we can get the entire information that you've presented here this evening.
Yeah, there will be images, and as well as the progress of our project. Again, we'll furnish you with a final document, which will have much more text, much more great.
Terrific. Okay.
But yeah, the website is another place where you can also leave comments. We have an open comment section.
Okay.
Again, a part of that community engagement. We also looked at a Facebook group that's in the area, so.
Great. Just one question, and because your presentation this evening is right in line with what we're going to be discussing this evening. And I don't know if you've met Michael Luna, one of the architects, our premier architects here in San Clemente, and he's doing a lot of work on South El Camino Real. So if you haven't met him, you ought to meet him, because he's doing a terrific job down in that area. Just one quick question, well, actually, may not be quick. What are the three most important elements for human scale? Do you, have you come up with, with that?
Oh, yeah. So architectural details that are smaller scale, that can be viewed while you walk. Good examples of places that have that would be maybe State Street, Santa Barbara, so a lot of little tile elements, or molding, wrought iron, maybe, for Spanish-style homes or buildings. So those are details. And then signage, smaller signs, so that you have to sort of, you know, walk to actually see what's going on there. And you know, you want the biggest signs to be on the site, to maybe be that blue P to say where the parking structure is. You know, you don't want to focus on the automobile. And then I would guess the third would be outdoor dining, just having more humans using the space would contribute to human scale.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bonnie?
All righty, thanks again. And just this weekend, on the 30th, I don't know if you happened to see the article about the bells. You talked about the bell, maybe implementing the bells in the lighting. And so if you haven't gotten this, this is what they look like, and I'll just pass it over. And it has the history of the King's Highway, where the bells are made, the different types, and what they look like, and maybe you'll want to implement some of that into our Spanish history, too.
Yeah, we could definitely add that to the final document.
Thank you, Bonnie. Don?
Yeah, once again, I think a great job for a quick, like you say, very high-intense project, to even create a website where we can go to and look at a lot of these things. I think it was your webmaster and creators are to be congratulated.
She's not here right now, but Jana was very instrumental to organizing the website.
And so I, I liked how you covered all the elements, since, since we're now eventually going to get into design guidelines, I think we have a lot of food for thought in the design guideline areas down there, since we've kind of got surf, came out of the general plan, but you've come up with some interesting data of how a lot of your current survey with the residents are interested in more of the Spanish effect, and then, of course, you came up with maybe an eclectic, a little bit of everything, which is good. The one question I do have, the bridge, I think, is really a key for us to the, to the school, but you've got the, the class-one bikeway on the other side of the street. Did you have any, or will it be in your final review, how we get students, like riding our bikes to school, from the side where the class-one trail is to the entrance to the bridge, which is on the other side of the street? Is there any thought in the details of your report on that, or have you given it any thought?
Well, they're certainly able to use the bridge, but right now, as it stands, it's very narrow. I think the future bridge, we are focusing on pedestrian usage, and we want that cross, that class-one bikeway to be more in line with the actual vehicle right-of-way to connect to El Presidente across I-5. Our project area is only El Camino Real, but if we had El Presidente, as well as the bridges, we would definitely have connected that, that bike lane.
Okay, thank you.
Art?
I want to congratulate you. Great job, and something important for planners is not only to come up with great ideas, but to present them properly and knowledgeably, and everyone who presented here and worked on the project did a great job. I think one thought I had was what came, brought you to the conclusion to have a definite entry and exit out of this zone, rather than what our city's kind of used to, of kind of flowing into air. of flowing into areas, rather than having an abrupt change? I particularly liked it, but what motivated you to do that?
Well, just in our interviews, the neighborhood, they really referred to themselves as the trestles neighborhood, and so, there was already the sort of identity and branding to the site, you know, the Surfers Row. And so, we thought that was a good opportunity to let people know that they've entered a unique site in San Clemente. You know, Del Mar is a very unique site, the pier is a very unique site, and so, this could be a very interesting focus area. And the Centennial General Plan actually identifies this as a focus area, so it could definitely become a unique neighborhood with an identity.
Very good response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
I'll echo the other commissioners. You did a wonderful job. Thank you very much. I think this gives us a lot of food for thought and some, you know, great kind of inspiration and insight into what we can do in that area. One thing I liked is what you do with the pedestrian bridge. It kind of turned an eyesore into, you know, more of a, even a sense of place down there for South El Camino Real, so kind of almost a landmark for the area, as opposed to, you know, something we'd rather not see. And I liked your use of the surfboard racks as street furniture. I think that there's a few areas of town where we should probably consider that as both, you know, both atmosphere and convenience for people. So, that was, again, a nice food for thought for us. One question I had was, I had two questions. One was, you talked with the Class 1 bike lane. Have you thought about how that might connect to the northern part of town? Like, would that go into another Class 1 bike lane or into the paseos that we have?
Obviously, connecting to another extended Class 1 bike lane would be ideal, but I think it would just flow right into them, and perhaps that would be an opportunity for future development, is improving the actual bike system in San Clemente. So, this could just be a launching point, a launching point for that.
That's good. If we got that done, we'd have to do something on the other side of it, so, right.
There would be, the community would want more, I would think.
Right. The other question I had was, it was interesting, the parking lot at the very south end, to give access, better access to trestles and as well as other areas. And it's a neat idea. I know kind of on the flip side of that is, you know, in this town, we look at, you know, any improvement has the potential to increase use, but the increased use can also potentially degrade the services. So, given that trestles is sort of a, you know, you have to walk in there, and it's kind of a gem that's more or less unchanged for many, many years, have you, did you have time to consider what impact more convenient parking might have to the more natural trestles beach?
Well, the traffic is there regardless, and we felt that taking parking, like that would normally just filter into the adjoining streets, and focusing them in one area would, like congregating them in one area would be more ideal than simply letting the status quo remain, because currently, a lot of the neighbors note that there's just a lot of, you know, strange cars in the area that doesn't belong to anyone, and they're there like every weekend, so.
Thank you.
Michael?
Well, you guys are pretty clever. I thought you did some great stuff there. I think trying to come up with a solution to that part of town is going, is difficult. It's a hodgepodge, you know, it's hard to get your arms around it. You did a couple of very elegant solutions that I thought were wonderful. One, both were the same kind of a thing. You took two very unattractive features and made them really cool, and that's the bridge and the sound wall. And by doing that, it starts to really become magic, and you can keep following up on that with street furniture, the signage, colors. All of those things are pretty easy to do, and they start to make it more pleasant on the eye, the color that was smattered here and there, and the outside street furniture, you know, those are all really home runs. So, I really liked what you did, and I'd like, I'd like to see you keep going with more. You did a great job.
Thank you. About the bridge, actually, when we went there, we actually walked across the bridge, and, yeah, you can't hear yourself think. And then, when we actually came down, this family crossed, and they were, you know, tourists, they weren't from San Clemente, and they said, yeah, it was very scary for their children. And so, we made that an emphasis because of that school across the way, so.
Well, we're going to give the public a chance to speak, but before they do, just to reiterate one more time, you know, we, it sounds like we all thought you did a fantastic job, and Bart makes an excellent point. You all did a great job on presentation, and Jeremy especially, want to compliment you in your quick thinking to some of our questions.
You should have seen Kai last night. He was very good.
All right, well, thank you very much. And at this point, we invite Mr. John Tully to come forward to address the issue, and anyone else who'd like to comment at this time?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm John Tully, South San Clemente resident. I'm also the founder of KTGY, and we do a lot of recruiting. Many of these students will be applying to our architectural and planning firm, so we recruit many, many, many people out of the school, so go Mustangs. You know, I think they did a fantastic job, and I think it inspires some thought and some rationale and some reasoning and all that, and I think you see what has happened in El Camino Real, you see, excuse me, by Del Mar Street, it maybe was about 20 years ago when Del Mar Street was improved with the pavers and the bulbs out and all that. And I think after a number of years, you see how business does improve and how the environment really does come about. One thing I emailed the students about, and I, as a resident down there, as I recognize, is in the northern area of the site, you know, by Avenida Magdalena, there's a lot of density, and I think you're seeing a lack of maybe upkeep on the units and improvements on the units, and it happens to be an area where there's probably some of the lower rents in all of San Clemente and lower sales prices, and I think that's attributed to a lack of parking. So, I believe that because of that area has so little parking in it, and the units there require, were required to only have one space per unit, that that's holding down the economic value of that area. So, I would encourage them to look at that, and I think you'd see an improvement in the units that are in that, in the northern section of the area, and I'd see, you'd see more revitalization if there was more parking. And so, in your work, make sure that you don't eliminate the El Camino Real parking that's already there, that you use by those residents. But if there was a way to increase the amount of parking there, I think you'd see some economic benefit from that for the units that are there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tully. Interesting idea. All right, at this point, we will adjourn, and we'll pick up, I think, just a couple minutes after seven to begin our regular meeting. Again, thank you very much, and we look forward to looking at the complete report. I'm sure it has even more great ideas.
I think we should give some applause.
I think we should. I call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, June 3, 2015. And Commissioner Edgelson, if you'd please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Please place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Petches, if you'd please call to roll.
Commissioner Edgelson?
Here.
Commissioner Barnes?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Chair Arden?
Here.
Commissioner Crandall?
Here.
Commissioner Ruland?
Here.
And Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Okay, that brings us to approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes to review and approve tonight. The first would be the set of minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of May 12th. Do we have any changes to that or a motion for approval?
I don't know if I got the right section. Is this the one where we looked at the restaurant?
No, this is, the first one is for the local coastal plan.
Oh, that, okay, mine's on the second.
So, just for the second? Okay.
Okay, I say, without any change, I'll move approval for the minutes of?
May 12?
May 12.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
I have to abstain because I wasn't here.
Oh, it's your microphone.
I abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie. Okay, and then, the second set of minutes would be those from May 20th, and Michael, you have a change for those?
I would like the record to show that
I would like the record to show that we suggested, and I think they agreed to...
Can you say the page and item number so that Eileen can follow?
I'm struggling to find it. It's the planting on the derived front side of the parking lot, not the back, but the front, those empty strips. And it doesn't exist in there, so I just wanted to get that added.
Oh, so it's on Hamilton's Restaurant, Item E, which is Page 5, Eileen?
Yeah.
And we had requested landscaping for the two barren strips that are adjacent to... Is that Victoria? I think that's Victoria.
Yeah.
Victoria. Okay, any other changes? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
If not, I will move we approve with the changes requested by Michael.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any abstentions or... Okay, all right, that brings us to oral and written communications. And at this point, members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentations. Please limit your presentations to three minutes. At this point, I have one card, and that's from Christie McBride-Hart. And I see her stepping forward with her handy assistant. Welcome.
My roadie. I have plans for you to look at. It is. Christie McBride-Hart, St. Clemente resident. Picture one, please. This is a picture from the view simulation of the Pico Bridge, the bridge designed for Beverly Hills by the Sea. View simulations are done exactly to the measurements on the plan, so this is what the bridge will really look like. It was approved by the Design Review Committee, but they did not have this view simulation to show how intrusive they are and how much they will block the ocean view corridor. This model was built... Here's the horizontal. This model was built to the diagram on Page 3 of your handout. They're 10 feet wide, nearly 8 feet tall, 95 cubic feet, and nearly 7 tons. And there's four on each side. After I showed this lovely creation to City Councilman Baker, asked staff to find out what could be done. Number 2, please. A week later, Tom Bonniget sent this email saying they could be gotten rid of with a vote from City Council, but any other change had to go through the design process, and that had to be done in three months, which is now two months. Last night, City Council decided to send it to you to fix. Number 3, please. The columns are so large that any replacement other than a simple pyramid cap would have to be huge to be in proportion. Number 4, please. The middle columns rise 5 feet above the 3-foot barrier, so they alone are 8 feet higher than the road with an 8, nearly 8-foot topknot on top of that. Number 5, please. I propose not only getting rid of the topknots, but lowering the middle 2 columns and capping them with a simple pyramid top. And I don't have it on mine, but on the very back of yours, I drew in triangles was what I did, to try and simulate the pyramid cap. I haven't lived in St. Clemente since 1977, my whole adult life, because it's a snooty, hoity-toity place. Please get this onto your agenda and save us from the bridge designed by Beverly Hills, for Beverly Hills by the Sea. Please make it so travelers see our town and the ocean and not this fancy schmancy bridge. Time is short, though. If nothing's done quickly, we will end up with Hershey Kiss up 8 feet in the sky. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you, Belle Hart.
Can I have a question? This was reviewed by Design Review?
Yes.
Okay.
They were bigger, too, both down the minutes. They were bigger than this.
Wow. Were there any other designs that you looked at?
We looked at a number of designs, Wayne, although I can't remember them. We looked at different variations for all of the pillars, the columns themselves. We looked at different designs for the arches, different designs for the insetts that are up above those, so I can't remember what all we looked at at the time.
Okay, how long ago was this, do you think?
Three years ago, do you think?
Longer than that.
Really?
Four or five years ago.
Uh-huh. So do we still have some of the other variations, other designs, that you looked at at that time, somewhere on file?
Well, I think, based on the council's direction, this is agendized for the next Design Review Subcommittee meeting on the 10th, and it'll be going to you as the Planning Commission on the 17th in order to meet those deadlines. And so, my understanding that there was an example that someone mentioned at the meeting from OCTA, a woman that was there, so we're going to provide that example. Tom would have the other variations we can look at. I think that the idea of the bridge, if I recall, was something to emulate some of the 1920s bridges and 30s bridges in LA as some of the examples, to try and look Spanish rather than just your standard concrete bridge. So that was the goal. I don't know if people realize the size of these finials on top or not, but we would be bringing back different options.
Who's simulation is this?
From just locking them off to a triangle to something different.
Was that Caltrans, or whose simulation is that?
It's Caltrans.
Because if you look at the drawings, it doesn't match the drawings. In proportions or anything. How tall those are?
No, they're different, aren't they?
Totally different.
Well, a little.
I mean, considerably higher and taller, and one's got a round top, one's got an acorn top, so I don't know which they're actually proposing. So that's something that needs to be answered when we hear it.
Yeah. It'd be helpful to have that information at Design Review, so... Okay, all right. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission during oral communications? Seeing no one step forward, we'll move on to the public hearing process. Pardon me. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first item on our agenda tonight is Item 8A, 407 Avenida Santa Barbara Cultural Heritage Permit 14-073, Lot Line Adjustment 15-156, Minor Exception Permit 15-157, Santa Barbara Apartments. Mr. Champa?
All right, good evening, planning commissioners. John Champa, I'm the project planner for the Santa Barbara Apartments. The project location is at 407 Avenida Santa Barbara. It's located within the residential high zoning designation, and it is adjacent to and within 300 feet of a number of historic properties. I believe the count is nine in total, however, adjacent to only two historic properties. Just to give you a little background on this location, it is currently occupied by a house that was built in 1947 and is approximately 800 square feet. On May 16 of 2007, the project received approval for the construction of a very similar four-story triplex that also had an in-bank garage. In 2009, those entitlements expired, and so the applicant is proposing a very similar project to what was approved then. Just to give you some context of the site, these are photos from Avenida Santa Barbara. As you can see, the topography from the street, it is rather significant, and so retaining walls are provided on site. The project's scope includes the demolition of the existing house and construction of the new triplex with the basement-level garage. Structure would consist of four levels along with a basement-level garage, and the units would range in size from almost 1,800 square feet to almost 2,400 square feet. Each of the units has its own deck and garage access via an elevator. As part of the project design, a lot line adjustment is proposed, which is reviewed by the city engineer. Staff has reviewed it and found it in conformance with the requirements and believes that the proposed lot line adjustment is an improvement to the configuration of the project site along with the adjacent historic property, and that the lot line, when adjusted, will be more of a traditional rectangular design and will eliminate the flag lot configuration. Staff's spoken to the property owner of the historic property, and they are in support of the lot line adjustment. So this is the site plan with the proposed project. So as you can see, again, the topography lines identifying the steepness of the lot. The proposed structure does meet all of the setback requirements with the exception of the minor exception permit for the encroachment of the garage into the required setback. However, the requested encroachment is to be at 10 feet, where normally 18 feet is required. The structure in the RH zone is allowed to be 10 feet, so it would be consistent with the existing, or the allowed footprint for the structure. Just to give you some ideas of the elevations here, we have just some black and white, and then also some color images, renderings that have been provided by the architect. So in going through the design review phase, this project is not located within the architectural overlay, so Spanish colonial revival architecture is not required. However, the applicant wanted to pursue that design and is consistent with the previous architectural style of the project that was approved in 2007. There are a number of setbacks and decks along the front to address any potential massing impacts from the street. And then you can also see what is proposed as a wrought iron gate to go along the front of the garage to be consistent with the general plan requirement to screen any underground parking.
John?
Yes.
I looked on the plans, and I didn't see a detail for the wrought iron gate. Is that opaque? Is there some kind of screening behind it, or do you look through it?
It won't be fully enclosed because of ventilation circulation requirements, so it will provide sufficient screening, along with the applicant will be screening any mechanical equipment through the interior of the garage as well.
Okay, so perhaps we can ask Mr. Luna when he comes up if he has something where he can show us the detail of what that'll look like. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. And the rear elevation was discussed at the Design Review Subcommittee. It actually went through two meetings, and this is in response to Design Review Subcommittee's comments in terms of breaking up the massing, providing some additional roof lines to soften the massing of the historic structure, or of the, to the historic structure. So, as you can see here, there are some... This is the rear elevation here, so we have some pop-outs here along with some decks, and then some additional setbacks on the fourth and third level. A cross-section was also requested by staff in the design review of the applicant, was provided at the second design review meeting, to analyze the massing impacts, or potential massing impacts to the historic structures. And this provides kind of a line of sight from the historic properties from the street. And as you can see, because of the topography differences of the historic properties and the subject site, the finished floor of the historic properties will be almost mid-level of the second story to the proposed project. So it will offset that height in that it'll be lower than the actual overall height of 41 feet that's proposed. And also just to mention that the allowed heights for the zone is 45 feet, and the applicant is proposing 41 feet, which is consistent in height with the adjacent developments of the fourplex that was built just next door. I think that was constructed in 2007. To discuss the minor exception permit, as previously stated, the lot does meet the topography requirements for an encroachment into the required 18-foot setback because of the difference in the topography. Actually, it would allow for a 5-foot garage to be set back 5 feet from the street, however, the applicant is proposing to maintain the existing footprint of 10 feet 1 inch from the front property line. So it would not have any change in the building footprint, and also the parking would be located 18 feet back once they are able to pull through. So the actual first parking space is 18 feet back. And one of the requirements, or the needs for the minor exception permit, is that with the new general plan, it required screening of the underground parking. And so with that, you brought forward the setback for the underground parking to this 10-foot request here.
Don, then, Michael, you have a question?
Not to quibble over, you just stated 10 feet 1 inch, but the staff report says 10 foot 2 inches, so I'm not going to argue over 2 inches, an inch here, but I just want to make it clear.
I think I just misspoke.
Okay.
Michael, did you have a question? Okay. Oh, Bonnie?
Yes, I have some questions about this project. And I wanted to ask you, you described the building as setback towards the back of the property, the existing. Did you measure how far back that is?
The rear yard setback for the proposed structure?
Not to the existing one that's there right now.
The existing structure setback?
Mm-hmm.
No, we did not measure that.
Okay, so I'm guessing, I have to guess, what I saw was about, it looked like the body of the home was about 40 feet setback.
I can check on the survey. There's a survey with the property. If you give me a second, I can look that up.
Well, because the neighboring property at 405 seems to be setback about the same amount, and then it has, it looks like it has landscaping in front, about 1,200 square feet of landscaping.
John, I think Michael might have the information for you. Well, perhaps... It looks like you have another question while Michael's looking for that.
I do.
Okay.
Well, okay, in comparison to the last time the permit in this project was brought forward, the permit expired. And I was looking at the description comparing the two projects, and I had a question about the parking, because on Page 2 of Attachment 4, which describes the previous project, it says that it covers the 55% of the space, just like this one does, and has aid spaces like this one does, but it complies to the 18-foot front to street-facing setback with a zoning code which is 18 feet. The proposed is the same. And so, and it looks like it was proposed that way a couple of times. And then we have this new one, and all of a sudden, it needs this, you know, it's trying to shorten the setback, and so I'd like to have an understanding of what's going on there.
So, thank you. Very good question. Basically, as the project was originally submitted, there was no garage door, no garage gate of any kind. It was just an open parking area. And that's what was approved within the previous project. As part of the review process, staff discovered that there was a new general plan policy that required for multifamily residential projects to provide screening of the garage. So originally, the setback to the parking area was 18 feet, and it still is 18 feet. reduces that setback distance to the proposed ten, approximate ten feet. So that's, that's why it's been reduced is from, initially, it was proposed and it was consistent in the staff reports. And so with this change is the resulting change in the setback and the request for the minor exception permit.
Is the, is the parking arrangement fairly similar to the original proposal then with the eight spaces?
Yes.
Okay, so that only changes putting the gate-
Actually, Bonnie, I think what you're comparing is, you're comparing the staff reports from the DRSC meetings for this project, not for, not for the one that was approved in two thousand and eight. I think it, cause I noticed Commissioner Brown also had noticed that. So, so, so this is, this is, there hasn't been any change to the, the site plan. There's only been a change in design in that the, the door or the screening was added to the, to the garage.
That's correct.
Do the neighboring properties have the similar topography?
Yes, they do.
And did they require grading?
The neighboring? The, the recent development project at four oh nine?
Like four oh nine, four eleven, four thirteen, four fifteen?
I think that the applicant can speak to that. I would assume, I would assume the answer would be yes, but I'll let the applicant confirm that.
Because I, the staff report for this one was saying that the reason given was that grading wouldn't be required. If I, the staff report is accurate?
I think it's less grading would be required and not a extremely tall retaining walls.
Did you get the pictures of, that we all got?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And I was able to distribute them prior to the-
Okay, well, I went and measured the areas of the setbacks of the properties going southwest down Santa Barbara. These are the, all the ones that have been developed beforehand into similar types of triplexes or multi-residential family living. And then as you go northeast, though, to the property adjacent to the subject property, for instance, that this was compared to, that owner may, in the future, may wish to demolish that and rebuild as well. And so I think it's probably, has more common sense for us to compare, make our comparisons with the things that have already been updated and done. And so that's why I measured all the setbacks of the other ones and across the street. And I think, I wanted to ask you, where do you measure your setback from precisely?
The setback's measured from the front property line. So in this area, the front property line is, I believe, five feet back from the face of curb. So that's all of the measurements. And I actually did provide a slide just in case there was any kind of question in terms of the neighborhood and the number of properties that encroach within the typical eighteen feet.
So it's, it's not from the curb then or?
No. All setbacks are measured from the property line, whether there's the front side or rear.
All right. The ones, I just measured everything from the curb and I don't know what effect that would be, but if we look at these, I put captions on also, you could see what the addresses are. And the subject property also has that very large tree. And I was wondering if, you know, if any, if anybody knew the type of tree that that was? This is a massive tree?
Bonnie, if we can confine the questions to the minor exception permit at this point and then if you have questions on other subjects, would you mind waiting until John has finished his presentation?
I thought he was done, you're asking.
No, 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 we were just asking about the, some questions about the minor exception permit. But if you wouldn't mind waiting, then we-
All right, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Almost there.
Just want one clarification for you. So really, we've got a port de chere going into the garage, which can be ten feet from the property line. And the only thing that's really making it face a garage is a gate, correct?
That's correct.
And there's no parking that is encroaching beyond the eighteen feet?
That's correct.
Michael, did you have a question?
Would you put the section back up? Has there been any feedback, response, or letters or anything from the owners of the house that's on the upside of the hill?
Actually, they're, they're here this evening and they're prepared to speak, but it's my understanding that they are in favor of the lot line adjustment and the project.
All right, I just, I was curious, thank you.
Okay, John.
Oh, all right. So we discussed the minor exception permit, that kind of sums up what, so jumping into staff's review of the findings for the project, staff believes that as far as the cultural heritage permit is, is considered, that the Spanish colonial revival design of the project is compatible with the adjacent historic structure and the recent, recent development in the neighborhood. The third and fourth floor setbacks from the structure along with the building design and the additional setbacks for the third and fourth floor, as I said, and the roof lines and varied wall planes help the, any potential negative visual or physical impacts to historic structure. The project is in context with the, with the residential high zoning designation for the neighborhood. And as you can see from some of the photos that Bonnie provided as well as with the attachments, it is in the residential high zoning designation and there are rather large tall structures next to smaller, older historic structures or just smaller structures that were built over time. And then in regards to the minor exception permit, the topography of the site does warrant the reduced setbacks and the setbacks that are requested are consistent with the front yard setback for the structure itself. So staff is in favor of the project and believes that it can meet all the required findings. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
John, does the project meet landscape requirements?
The project does. It would be proposing trees along the front, however, with the latest ordinance approved by the city council, I believe it was yesterday, you know, a lot of that landscaping probably won't be going in for a while until the drought is addressed. So that is something that will need to address at a later time.
Okay, thank you. And Jim, you have a question for John?
Yeah, do we know, this might be, this might be too much of a question, but do we know how much less grading, like how many fewer tons of dirt we need to move around as a result if we provide, by doing the ten-foot setback as opposed to eighteen?
I think maybe the applicant would be better suited to address that.
Sure.
I can definitely say that it would reduce the, the wall heights along the front of the property because, you know, if they really needed to, they, they may have needed to go to five feet, you know, because the topography would allow for the site to do that, so, which would require significant retaining walls. As you see, see from just the existing site, the retaining walls there. So as far as the amount of grading, I can't say for certain, maybe Michael might be able to assist with that.
Okay, Wayne?
Yes. Did they receive coastal commission approval during the last application process?
From the records that I looked at, I did not see any. However, coastal commission would be required for this application because it is replacing single-family residents with the multifamily.
Uh-huh. I noticed on the adjacent street behind it, not the adjacent, but the street behind it, there seems to be a driveway that goes into this property in the rear. Is that an easement?
Actually, that's the kind of awkward lot line configuration that is existing now. So as part of the proposal with the lot line adjustment that will be going to the city engineer, that will become part of the historic property.
Okay. There's a telephone pole right behind the project. Is that going to be eliminated or put underground or is that still gonna stay?
I think that might be better use, a better question for Michael.
Okay.
I think that the building code requirements do require all undergrounding for any utilities that are going to the site, so.
That's right. I'm sorry?
I would say that the telephone pole is probably a common pole, you know, for the entire neighborhood going down, all the way back in the back of the property line. So the undergrounding would only apply to the development itself.
Actually, that's the only telephone pole in the back of that, that area there. Then there's telephone poles across the street. But there's not, that's the only pole behind the property that I saw. And the other question I have is, does this meet the, and there was a question there about landscaping, but does this meet the requirements of the urban open space?
It's as far as the design guidelines?
As, yes, as far as the landscaping requirements. You mentioned that there would be some trees out front, but I, what other landscaping would be, will be required there according to our general plan, the design guidelines?
For, for the multifamily and zones, including the RH, it doesn't specify a necessary percentage of landscaping like there is in the residential low zoning designation where it requires fifty percent of the front yard setback area. In this particular zone, it just requires the, the maximum amount feasible based on the site design and access to the property.
You're talking about landscaping. Wayne, your question was about open space, correct?
Well, urban open space is part of the landscaping according to our design guidelines.
But it's also part of some, the balconies, I believe, contribute to that.
The balconies and also it does meet the lot coverage of the fifty-five percent. So there would be open areas to the lot.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Bonnie?
Okay, so that would be the zoning code seventeen point four oh, point oh five oh, I believe, which talks about the amount of, the percent level of the urban area that you have to have fifteen percent if it's on the street level, twenty-five percent if it's on the multiple levels. And I was wondering if you'd figured out the percentage of the, of the urban area?
I don't have that percentage broken out, no.
To make sure we've met that, the requirement. And then I've wondered if you looked at, into sidewalks and pedestrian-friendly uses now that we're increasing the density of people. My understanding is that now eight hundred thousand dollars has been transferred over into the sidewalk fund from the parking lot that was going to go in in North Beach. And there may be some available funding to improve the sidewalks there in relation to this.
Actually, I think that, I think the applicant is providing the sidewalk, it's included in the plans.
That's correct.
And does that go to that property line you were discussing or?
Oh, yeah, I believe it goes just behind, just to the, the front property line.
So it would be like a five-foot wide sidewalk area? Okay. And then I wanted to ask about the tree. Since, would the applicant be willing to, to replenish our urban forest? The tree is ginormous, it's going to be having to come out right in the middle. And that's in one of your photographs here on it. And it's a shame that so many of these projects that are demolished that have these mature trees on them like this. The loss of them, they absorb the CO2, the greenhouse gases all year long, especially if they're evergreens. And, and they produce fresh oxygen and make the air quality good for us all year long. And as these come out, we put a fifteen-gallon bucket in, they can't do the same thing. And so I was wondering if the applicant would mind placing, if not feasible, on this lot, but somewhere else, another tree as needed in the city. We've lost an awful lot by the freeways too with the widening project and I would like to see that as a condition and us to start, think a little bit more of the environment in our planning for our future planning. So.
We could certainly ask the applicant, Bonnie.
Okay.
And just to clarify, the open space area requirement applies to mixed-use projects, not high-density residential?
Okay, so we're okay on this one?
Okay, Wayne, your lights?
Oh, no, it's not, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. So if there are no more questions for John, then if you'd like to invite your applicant to make a presentation.
Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, city staff, my name is Michael Luna. I'm the architect and owners representative for this project. Indeed, the, on this site, there was a project approved in two thousand and nine and unfortunately due to a very bad economy, it was not completed. And the, the project is extremely similar to what is being presented here. That project was unanimously approved in two thousand and eight, I believe, and cited that it was indeed very compatible with the pattern of development that is, that exists in that neighborhood and in that zone. And in that zone, which is designated residential high density, is one of the few residential high-density areas in town. So henceforth, a drive through this street and some of the others will, will show some, some larger buildings. The key here and what's separate, what's different about our project is that we have, and actually, some of you may or may not know, I also was the architect for the two projects, actually, it was one larger project of condominiums just to the west towards the beach. And so that project was also unanimously approved and so we, we looked to just continue that pattern and continue the Spanish theme up the street and hopefully blend in well with the adjacent historic properties. The adjacent historic properties is, was our primary consideration. The site section that, that we do have shows indeed the sort of topography that we have to deal with. And so what, since our project does have higher density than the adjacent historic properties, we very intentionally on the rear, on the rear elevation of this project, provided setbacks on the rear. The historic property sits over here in relation to this elevation. So in terms of the distance between the historic property, it starts off probably forty, goes to forty-two, then like fifty feet, which is very unusual, hard to find when there is development that occurs next to historic properties, that kind of separation that we're providing. And so it is, you know, we definitely took that into consideration. Our project was very carefully scrutinized, scrutinized during the design review subcommittee. We made very significant design changes to make sure that it's as good as it can be. And design re, we spent hours on this, looking at this to make sure that we had enough articulation in this building and that there was enough massing and elements, stepping back, creating depth and relief to the elevations and particularly that is so mandatory when we have a project in this number of levels. So with respect to that, you know, unfortunately, we look at these elevations sometimes in a two D, two dimensionally, flat on a piece of paper. And so what is, what is really neat, what is the real reality is how much stepping is going on. The first plane here, then the second plane here grounding the building, this element goes back, this goes further back, these are way back. And again, you start to see that in the elevations here and particularly even on the front. Realistically, by perspective, when you're on the street or side back, excuse me, sidewalk, because of the stepping that's going on, because this is so far setback from this pedestrian here, you're not even going to see the top level of this building, but you will see this very nicely articulated element in here that has a lot of movement and a lot of, I think, hopefully, good design that, that you'll approve of. With regard to the adjacent buildings, again, that project was approved unanimously, you know, the condominiums next door, the newspaper article when that was approved said, "In harmony with history." I'll never forget the article. And, and we hope that this is in harmony as well with the historic properties. To answer some of your questions, the, the garage entrance, it is not a wrought iron grill. We can't, nobody makes a wrought iron grill in a roll-up configuration and it's the only thing that'll work in this, in this tight space. In a roll-up gate, wrought iron is just too heavy. This is actually a lightweight aluminum gauge done in a very nice pattern that isn't black in color and you'd, and you'd really have to get right up next to it to see that it's not wrought iron. But it does ground the building nicely, provide some screening, lets air move through and indeed everything inside that garage in terms of mechanical systems, plumbing dropping down from floors will all be screened with soffits and so forth. So when you're on the sidewalk, even though you'd be able to look in, it will have screening to all those ugly pipes and so forth. So that's, that's something that's very important. With regard to Vaughn, your comments with regard to measuring the street setbacks and so forth, it's, it's really important to understand that as we- With regard to Vaughn, your comments with regard to measuring the street setbacks and so forth, it's, it's really important to understand that as we measure that and look at that, those elements, that what you're looking at particularly on the, I guess would be the south side of the street, southeast side of the street, the same side as our project, that these, what you're looking at a lot are the backyards of structures because they actually front on the upper street, which is La Paloma, I believe, no, it's not La Paloma. But those are backyards. And so we will see larger setbacks of those, of those houses, the ones that are left over that are, that again, sit next to some very large massive, there's some very large condominium buildings on the street, done way before our design review, unfortunately. I'm not sure I understand the question on the grading, but I can, I can field that question when I'm done with this. And as far as the coastal commission approval is concerned, I do believe that it was approved by the coast of the former project. I do believe that we did get that far. I think that perm, building permit was just about ready to issue, and, and I think we did go that far. With regard to the telephone pole, yeah, we'd love to be able to get rid of that. And we're going to have to do an assessment really of, of how many properties are being served by it. I believe that it is only our subject, is it four? Oh, okay. In terms of being able to underground that, I, I really don't know that I, you know, we don't have estimates on that. If we can, we surely want to. But I don't, given all the ramifications on that, we, you know, we don't know what all is going to be involved in the potential cost. But if we can, and if it's within reach, we'd love to get rid of them. I'm sure, you know, who knows, maybe the four neighbors or the four ones that are being served by it can work together to get rid of it. And as far as the tree is concerned, yes, unfortunately, this tree is right in the middle of the property. And as far as planting another tree in town someplace, I think I can convince my client to do that in exchange for your support. So we hope that you like the articulation. We hope you like what we've tried to do with this. And again, DR and SC, you know, DRSC sent me back to the drawing board, and we worked hard on this to, to make sure that, you know, it was, it was going to be, provide enough relief and provided enough setbacks and was far enough away from the historic buildings. As far as the topography is concerned, nothing we can do about that, but it, you know, as we're, we tried to stair step up, you know, the building up the hill. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Yeah, I, I apologize for bringing this up now. I was going to wait for discussion, but Jim, can you bring up seventeen thirty-two point oh five oh? F, I guess it is. And I just want to have you and John address how the plan for the first floor complies with the section. It has to do with the side entry of a, side entry?
Sure.
It requires eight feet, and your first level has the five foot wide walk up to it, and then some double doors at that five foot side yard. Yes, the entry to the unit is back further, but entry into the building is at five foot rather than the eight.
Uh, that's not our primary entrance along that side. The, the access that we show on the sides of our building are for fire department access and general access in general. But we are considering, considering all units are accessing all of the units through this front door through a common interior stairway, which is great for security. And so it was designed this way for security so you can come into a controlled lobby. There's a main entrance facing the street, and through here, you flow up through interior circulation along through here to get to all the, the units' fronts doors. So we don't have any entrances coming up off of here, coming into an entrance.
It goes into the lobby each time, or that stairwell, whatever we want to call it.
Yeah, the, the lobby stairway at each level. Lobby on this level with the stairway, same thing here, there's an entrance here off of this lobby here and off the stairs and off the elevator. There's a small residential elevator here, and the same thing with the access here and so forth. So, so I don't think that that provision would.
Okay, that's a good justification. And then the other one was E, that garage door. We got to catch twenty-two. They say you got to have it, but that, we're going to need some kind of control for that, I would assume, for the guest parking. Have you figured out?
Well.
What a guest does when they arrive at this property and want to park in the guest stall?
Yeah, you know, I think that, well, first of all, the garage door, the, the roll-up door itself is not a strict requirement by the code. It's not being required by the code.
I think it is now, unfortunately. That's why I say it's a catch twenty-two and maybe our problem.
What are you looking for?
E, four C. E, four C. Up, down. There's E, go to four C. Keep going down, keep going down. C, read that. Uh, let's see. There is something in here that says you got to have, one of the things you have to have is a garage door. Have to keep going downward. There it is. And that's something we may need to clean up in the future too. So you have to have the gate, but that's fine. But I think you need to consider how the guest is going to contact somebody to open it or whatever, or however we accomplish it.
Uh, in this case, where it's only three residential, we could potentially put a little kiosk in the middle of that driveway with a push button access to a unit. That's possible to do, but for only three units, you know, I think someone can use their cellphone realistically. Hey, I'm here, you know? If it was twenty units, we would, I think, need a formal guest entrance with, with a gate, phone or communications. But I think for three units, it's, might be a bit much. But we can provide a, a little call box out there, I think.
Yeah, it's something we'll just discuss when we get to discussion.
That's an option, certainly. And I'm, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
I had a question for you, Michael. The color attachment, landscape attachment that we have in our packet, which, attachment eight, is a bit different, I think, than your landscape plan. And so I wasn't sure which one was the most current.
Yeah, I don't see dates on these. And unfortunately, my landscape architect is not here, but.
I think, maybe I can add something to that, is that some of the feedback that was provided by the Designer Review Subcommittee at the last meeting, these were the images that were provided, so I wanted to provide that as some assistance to go with the landscape plan. The landscape plan has been updated from the Designer Review Subcommittee meeting. So that is actually what you're looking at is the most current.
Okay, so when, when I see the crepe myrtle here, and it's not on the plans, and instead it's, I think olive trees might be the, the substitute, it's the olive tree that you're planting on?
I believe so.
Okay. And I don't, I don't have an objection to the, to the crepe myrtle. Just my reason in mentioning it is they have a, they tend to have a fungus issue this close to the coast. So you might want to ask your, if it is planned, just ask your landscape architect if this is some kind of resistant variety, because they're beautiful trees. It's just, you know, it can, it can be an issue. So if you want to ensure longevity, that might be something that you want to take a look at.
The important thing about the landscape proposal is that it's drought tolerant and non-invasive from coastal commission approved list as well. So I'll just add that.
I just was concerned about vitality, so.
I understand. Me too.
I saw that too, and get, John, was it, did you have the strawberry tree on the new landscape plan, the arbitrus marina? Because that's the drought tolerant, you know, disease resistance, very good, and it's evergreen, and it works year round to absorb CO2 and produce oxygen. Is that on there?
I believe it's on the, it's on the plans, but it's not in here, because I think they're saying that, that is the correct.
It's on the plan.
Okay, yeah, because I thought I saw that on there, and wanted to make sure that was recommended, because they're hardy.
Yeah, and then olive trees, olive trees do, do not require and do not like water, so that probably in this environment, probably a better pick anyway, so.
Are there any other questions, Michael? Okay. Thank you, Michael.
There's a grading question, I forget who that came from.
Oh, that, Jim?
Yeah, it was, I was curious about it. I know it might be a little bit unfair, because you probably haven't done the math, but it's, it's more like, you know, I know we're, because of the front yard, the purpose, one of the purposes of that front yard setback is to save on what we grade of there. And I, I just wondered if you had at least some, you know, sort of hand waving notion of what we're saving in the grading in terms of how much dirt we're not having to move around as a result of not having that eight, full eighteen foot setback?
Well, the, anything in, in essence, anything in the front that, that you're forced to provide additional for just pushes the project further back, croaches into parking, it pushes retaining walls further back. So, yeah, it's potential, you know, creates more grading for, for the project. How much, I don't know, but it adds up.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to address this issue to please fill out a card and provide it to our recording secretary. I have two cards, one from Mr. Robert Dyer, and then one from Harold Alzate. Mr. Dyer, if you'd like to go first?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about this project. My wife and I, Suzanne, are the owners of the historic home that's just adjacent to this development. We purchased that home in two thousand nine, are fully aware of the plans that were in place to develop that property behind there. We thought that it was a, a good plan and it conformed with the existing condos that were there and kept with the Spanish Revival part of the property. So we're very much in support of the project. A primary interest to us, though, is a lot line adjustment, which Mr. Agelson did bring up, the issue of that easement in that driveway in there. So we will resolve the situation where that was the only access to that home behind us with this lot line adjustment along with the project. That will, that will resolve that, and that property will, will go to the historic home and allow us to better develop and, and build out that landscaping. Beyond that, I think they've done a good job of putting together some good plans. We're very much in support of the project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dyer. Harold?
Good evening, my name's Harold Alzate. I'm the owner of the property at four seven Avenida Santa Barbara. I want to thank everybody for taking time to review and take a look at the, the project. I think it's going to be a, a great addition to the neighborhood. It, it's the colonial revival style. Michael did an excellent job with it. My wife and I are very excited because we, we plan on living there and staying that home and staying as a part of the, the community here in Piribone, San Clemente. And I thank Robert and Suzanne for coming and supporting the project and giving us their point of view. And I hope, well, we can get a approval and move forward on this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Harold. Is there anyone else who wishes to address this issue? Okay, seeing no one step forward, I'll close the public hearing and invite discussion among the commissioners. Who'd like to start us off? Don?
A question for staff, if I could, John. The home itself is in that, in nineteen forty-seven, and I emailed you today, it's, it's not an historical asset itself, and there's a, since it was built around that time, I was just wondering why it wasn't.
Yeah, I did a little research on the property, and it was built in nineteen forty-seven, so it is within that period of, the later period of significance. And I think it was part of the city's very first list of historic properties. That was a list that was, is my understanding developed before there was any real analysis done by any historic professionals. And so the analysis that was done by our first historic resource survey that was done, I believe it was in ninety-five, did not include the property on the historic structures list. And they did look at, you know, properties to add, properties to remove, and then following that in this survey that was done in two thousand six, they also did that same evaluation and did not include the property in that as well.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the answer.
Anyone else have anything for discussion? They're pretty shy tonight.
Everybody's shy tonight, which is fine. I just want, we reviewed this very carefully for architectural style and all, so in the Designer Review Subcommittee, we were comfortable with the changes they worked with as very, very hard. And I feel it does meet for the, the requirements for the historical cultural heritage permit. The lot line adjustment, we don't really have, do we have to make a finding on that? I don't think so.
No, it's, it's a city engineer call, it's not even a finding listed.
I'm surprised it was even on here. And the minor exception permit, I think, is more of kind of a clerical thing. I was reading it as if, really, since the parking is eighteen feet back, that front part of the structure is basically a portcachere going back into parking. The fact that we're, we're taking the position that it's an exception, since he can have the structure there, I'm fine with that. A little uneasy with outer resolution of how to get to the guest parking, but I think that can be resolved, working with staff and whatnot. Because there is no requirement when that door's down or when it's up. If it stays up, there's nothing to say you have to put it down, so. I'm in support of the project, and I think they've done a good job.
Jim?
Yeah, we, we looked at this a couple times in Design Review, and we, I think we went over it pretty carefully, and they were pretty sensitive to the comments we made in terms of, I think we had some, some concerns at first about the view from that historic house up on the street above and, and what the property looked like. This is a, a little unusual, and it's a high density building for us. I think we tend to do things that are a little smaller, so I know my first reaction is, you know, gee, it's big, but it is, the area zone is residential high. And as I was, as I look around there on that street, there's a lot of other buildings of similar, you know, density and type. As, as Michael kind of alluded to, too bad some of those buildings didn't have design review, they're older buildings and they're just kind of block apartments, you know, simple block of flats, as they say in Monty Python. But, but I think this adds to the neighborhood. It's consistent with the, with the structures that are next to it. I think they do a good job of not interfering with the various historic structures that are around there, and we were looking at that pretty closely. So all in all, I think, as I reviewed the findings, you know, they're all findings that I can make. And so far, from what I've heard from the other commissioners, I'm, I'm in support of this project.
Don?
Yeah, I, like, the minor exception permit is a pretty standard engineering waiver for the grading and all that. So, I mean, like they say, for the topographical change in this area, they could have gone to five feet. Normally, it had meant for the cultural heritage requirement, the city engineer would probably have made this as an administrative finding, you know, without even, for a project that wouldn't even come to us. So the, and the lot line adjustment is another one of those standard administrative cleanups, which I think cleans up the area. When it comes to the cultural heritage permit, when I first looked at it, when I first read the report, finding G said the additions are sufficiently in comformance with the Secretary of Interior interior standards, and so that kind of triggered my, my interest quite a bit that maybe from the Design Review, maybe from the DMT issue thing, this was a kind of a borderline edge thing, I don't know. But as I looked through the Design Review minutes that were included in the package, I said, I see the provision that the project is taken. So I believe I can make, I can make the findings to support the project. And when I looked at the other additions in the, in the neighborhood, I see it's in conformance with the, with the design areas that have been recently done down there. So I think I can support it, and thank you very much.
Wayne?
Yes, it is big, but it certainly blends with.
Yes, it is big, but it certainly blends with the other two projects that you did, Michael. And it's well-designed, very well-designed. I wish there was a requirement for more landscaping in front because, but there is not. But I wish there were, to say the least. One quick question, do the residents have the ability to press a button and open the garage door when, they do? Well, that solves that problem because they, people can get on their cellphone and say, "I'm here," and they can press a button or whatever and say, and the garage door goes open, comes open. Because that's a very heavily parked street, one of the most heavily parked streets in the Pierbo area, especially during the summertime. Many years ago, I used to park there when I didn't live in the Pierbo and walk down to the pier, but you can't do that anymore in the summertime. So, but I am in favor of the project. I think it's very, very well-designed. I think there's sensitivity to the historic home behind it. And so I'm in support of the project.
Bonnie?
I had not, no concerns about the architecture. The work has been so well in the design, but I was concerned about the setback. But now I have an understanding that the measurements were taken from the property line and it's, it's not as bad as I thought it was. I'm a little concerned about the mass of the project. We have to make sure that we don't mansionize the triplexes at the expense of the environment too, so that it's too much of a building and not enough landscaping. I'm okay with this now, understanding the setback better. But I would like the condition that the applicant does provide not one, but two trees somewhere else needed in the city, since there isn't very much room for landscaping on this property. And if I get that assurance, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Who's getting it?
I think he's, gonna consult with him. I think we can...
Two strawberries, twenty-four gallon. Two strawberry, twenty-four gallon. Twenty-four inch box.
Twenty-four inch box, is that the size that you're looking for?
Okay, while they're working that out, we'll come back to that.
Okay.
And then, Michael?
Yeah, I'm in support for this project. I think it's well-designed. I think it fits into the neighborhood, which is, it's a strange neighborhood there. These buildings are massive and my first look at them was very surprising. But I do believe that this is a good fit and I think what's there now is terrible. So I would imagine everybody's going to be happy to see this get done.
Okay, and they're still working on the, on the tree issue. Oh, I'm sorry, I think we're...
I have another comment. I'd really appreciate the neighbors who own the historic property adjacent coming tonight and speaking in favor of it. That's a very powerful statement to me. And so I thank you for coming tonight and taking your time to, you know, support your neighbor. In addition, of course, the lot line adjustment, I think, helps everybody out for the neighborhood. It's kind of a win-win. So your statements tonight, to me, were very important and I'm glad you came up to lend in your expertise since you're the, and thank you for preserving and owning and owning. I thank you for it.
Yeah, I wanted to make a quick comment before he makes his. I just wanted to say that as far as making a condition of approval and voting on it to have him put trees, my vote wouldn't be predicated on requiring him to do that. If they offered to do it, that's great, but I wouldn't hold my vote up to require them to do that.
Michael, did you want to say what your client had decided?
My client is willing to do one tree, one twenty-four inch box tree at a location determined by the city and also provided that the city provides the irrigation and maintenance of the tree on the long term.
Thank you for offering this environmental element to our city.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all right.
You haven't chimed in, so.
All right, well...
I, oh, I want to talk about the tree. I mean, I hate, I hate losing large trees, although this is a bit unkempt, but, you know, these large mature trees we like to, like to hold on to. But like bard, I hesitate to, you know, I, my approval of it wouldn't be predicated on the tree. It's generous of the applicant to offer that. One question I would have is what, we don't really even know what the species is. This tree could be within a few years of the end of its life. I have no idea.
Arborete marina.
And how old, how, how old is this tree and how long do they usually live? I just don't want to necessarily have us burden the applicant to replace a tree that might be gone in five years anyway. So, you know, there is that. And they're putting a lot of, they're required to already put a lot of trees on their property as well. And we don't have a place for it. The city doesn't currently have some spot where we, you know, plant, we know we plant trees. So that's another thing, it's kind of like, well, we're requiring them to do that, but we don't have a place in the city to put it. We would put it on city property somewhere, question mark. So there's, to me, there's a little, there's too many unanswered questions to provide this as a, as a condition of approval, although if the applicant wants to do it, I think it's certainly generous.
Michael?
If I may, thank you for allowing me to speak on this again. Our project is proposing seven trees. Originally, our proposal was for five and during the DMT process, excuse me, design review process, we added two more trees in the rear of the site. So I think we are actually, if we're losing one, we're gaining six. And so I feel like we're addressing the green element on this personally.
Thank you. I, I think I said this in design review, this is a very difficult project for, for me to review. My, my primary concern, or one of my primary concerns when we look at a project plan next to historic property is not just the impact of how it impacts public views of the historic property, but how it impacts the context of the historic property. And I'm often concerned that we don't have enough setback because it's, you know, a home is towering over a courtyard that's a critical part of a historic property. And, you know, it was difficult for me to evaluate this, this project because the intended density for this area means that it is likely that the, a project would tower over the historic property. So I think for me, my support of this project was dependent on the, the adjustments that the owner and Mr. Luna made that gave a little bit more room to that, that space in the backyard. And also my coming to really understand that the, that the requirements when we're in this high-density area are very different than what we would require in a lower-density area as far as the, the standards, as far as impact on that historic home. Because this is in character with that neighborhood. So I'm, I'm in support of the project. Like Wayne, I would like to see higher landscape standards. But I think with the standards that we have, I think that the applicant has been flexible and generous. So I, I'm comfortable with the project as it is without requiring an additional tree to be planted somewhere. Do we have a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion. I'll move that we adopt resolution number PC fifteen dash zero two four, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California approving cultural heritage permit fourteen dash zero seven three and minor exception permit fifteen dash one five seven Santa Barbara apartments. A request to allow the development of a triplex with a reduced garage setback that is adjacent to two historic structures and within three hundred feet of multiple historic structures located at 407 Avenue to Santa Barbara.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, passes seven zero. And that brings us to item eight B.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item eight B, which is zoning amendment fourteen dash four five six and general plan amendment fifteen dash zero four nine. And I will be recusing from review of this item as I own property within five hundred feet of the zone that's being discussed tonight.
And I, Donald Brown, also have property, own a property that's within five hundred feet of the property in question, so that I will also recuse per the Brown Act.
Okay, play a little musical chairs.
Hello.
Hello.
Chair of commissioners.
Please, get us started.
All right. So this is a follow-up to the April twenty-second planning commission meeting on the general plan amendment and zoning amendment. The, that project wasn't ready, the full scope of amendments weren't ready for this evening's meeting due to external circumstances. So staff had prepared a narrowed-down staff report for the purpose of discussing the mixed use three-point-two area in which we've received public comments and questions. So to make sure that we have solid direction on the code that has been previously presented to the commission, we want to have some continued discussion of that. And there's some items that we're continuing to work on, such as mapping, environmental studies, and some other items that will all be wrapped up in which a recommendation is to continue this, the overall project to the July eighth planning commission meeting. And overall, staff requests that the commission, if there's any specific direction that the commission wants to give staff regarding the draft ordinance, that a straw vote be taken so it can be noted in the minutes clearly. And, and then it just allows very clear code writing after this meeting. So with that, I'll go through that.
Yeah, I have a question. I thought this was going to be on the seventeenth of June because July the eighth, we're going to have perhaps some, some new commissioners who are not going to be familiar with this project. So it really needs to be on June seventeenth, I would imagine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how that would be feasible.
It is a good point, Jim. What did you have on?
I, I guess it's just a matter of whether, what kind of direction we get at this meeting and whether we can respond quick enough to get it on the seventeenth. But potentially, it's up to you to continue it to whatever meeting you want.
Is, given, I understand there's...
I think the bigger question would be, Chris, and all the, all the other environmental issues for the larger, no, just, we're not just talking about MU three-point-two, we're talking about the whole amendment. I know Chris has been working on the environmental and it has to be circulated and I don't know what the, whether you can get it on the seventeenth or not.
I, I just think that the July eighth meeting, I've really tried to expedite this entire project and it's, it's the most reasonable timeline to pull everything together. There's a lot of deliverables, like we're, as I noted actually in the previous slide, we're, what we're proposing to do is have three separate resolutions for the, the next planning commission meeting. To simplify, the planning commission gave staff direction to add page numbers and organize things in a certain way that would allow really easy decision-making and discussion, like we did, we had the three parts to the discussion the last meeting. We're proposing to have three separate resolutions. There'll be a series of maps, the first city's zoning map, NGIS, is taking a lot of time. So there, there's a lot of work that's being put into this, not just your typical staff report.
So I understand there were external circumstances that, you know, caused the delay, but you don't feel like the resources are available from staff to have this completed in two weeks? That's what you're, that's what you're telling us?
Yes.
Okay. This is Michael.
Can I have a question? This particular zoning requirement seems to me to be best understood by looking at examples of building sections on land that slopes. And I remember that Jim, when he talked about it last time, he had all these diagrams with plate heights and whatnot and all that stuff. I, I find this terribly confusing because it doesn't attach in a graphic picture that would be easy to understand. To me, we could come up with some fairly standard-type sections with plate heights and roof heights so that people could understand it rather than have to, you know, necessarily figure it out from all the words. And I, and I'm saying this in support for everybody so they really get a better handle on what it is we're trying to do. And I, for one, would like to see that.
How would that be different than the graphics that have been previously presented?
Well, I don't know if it's going to be simpler.
Let's, I think maybe we ought to hold that off to the discussion stage because we haven't even made the presentation on the...
Oh, well, he had, I thought he said that he wanted to have some input on this, so...
Well, let's, why don't we, why don't we let staff make the presentation and then we'll have, have questions at that point. Please.
So at the last meeting, there is a part three to the overall discussion that include the mixed-use three-point-two area and the extension of the architectural overlay, clarification of policy to include South El Camino Real. That was the previous intent of the general plan adoption. And so there is a draft ordinance that was presented to the commission and there was comment and questions taken. After discussion, there was a vote taken to support the draft that was previously presented to the commission that includes several items, including a height change, which the council had directed these changes ultimately to reduce the height of the maximum allowable height of development there along El Camino Real from three stories to two stories. And so a number of things that have been recommended along those lines in terms of the detailed implementation, such as how to measure height, some slight differences in the height limits to accommodate current construction practices and market demands and following the various research that we've done and communicating with building professionals locally. So with all that, this is the outcome of the text for height and number of stories in the general plan that had been drafted. And essentially, the idea is to limit the number of stories of projects to two on El Camino Real, which was the specific direction the council gave us, and not have a specific number of story limit on the alley side because with a sloped topography, sometimes you'll have split levels or you'll have basements or parking garages in a way that it can get tricky at times visually to distinguish what a story is. And so the overall, from a large-scale point of view, the focus of, in SaaS perspective, the main focus of the standard should be on limiting building mass in such a way that's incompatible with the neighborhood. That was what our focus was and we thought that could be achieved through height standards and the other standards that, that are proposed. So we had a special type of height measurement and I can get into more details, you had mentioned the, the drawings, I have them here if you want to look at those. So we can get into that in a minute. Maybe it would be helpful just to use those as the guide in how to explain this.
Okay, I think Wayne had a question about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
On February the third, the city council gave us direction.
Yes.
And the direction was mixed use, two stories on the El Camino side.
Yes.
And a limit of three stories on the alley side. Not three and a half, not four, but they gave us direction for three stories on the alley side. So what we're doing here is taking, taking it a different way than what the direction was from city council. I went to the tape, I listened to the tape, and the tape was very specific with regard to what the city council direction was. So I just wanted to bring this up now because that's not the direction that city council has given us.
Can I just say that I totally agree with Wayne? And I have a problem with, all of a sudden, the downhill can be multiple stories and it, you know, it, it all of a sudden, to me, it defeats the direction that we were given. And I think it defeats the spirit of what the G-PAC thought about this particular zoning, which is two in the front and three in the back. And we've already seen an example where the back has been more than that and very massive. And, and so I, I totally agree with Wayne that we, we need to put this into the bounds of what we're... we're trying to do in the spirit of the zoning.
Yes, there was also comments made at the council meeting, there were some questions at the end of the discussion regarding basements and additional building height below the grade of the alley. And the consensus was that that was not a concern, that you could have additional building area below the height of the alley, so we considered that. We had a discussion very beginning of this process regarding that discussion the council had. And there are certain circumstances where you can have mechanical rooms, a variety of rooms, where if you were to have a straight plate line or ceiling line all the way across, when you have sloped topography, that can limit you from a design perspective. And so what staff considered is, what is the mass of a three-story building? So it is understood, staff has very clear direction, yes, the intent was three stories. There's a building height limit in the code right now for three stories. So I could go back, it's 45 feet, top of roof, and 37 feet for what a three-story building is. So with that, those height limits are put into the, continue, would remain in the general plan in our draft ordinance, to ensure that the development could not exceed three stories' building mass on the backside of the lot. So we, staff does have that same understanding. It's just not specifically calling out three stories only, because it, in staff's perspective, it's limiting and doesn't reflect the unique circumstances of how the lot has a downward slope, and there might be a need to have variation in like split levels and whatnot, basements.
Bonnie, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm, sorry, it's more like a discussion now, but what concerned me was on the advice from the Architectural Guild, you know, two levels of parking stacked behind the street level, commercial should be counted as a single story. And that concerns me too, what is the height of each of these, and is that going to go beyond, and will be there some type of variance for this type of thing having to do with the parking? So I'd like staff to look at that and make sure that it doesn't create a situation where it becomes too higher in the alleyway, having to configure this type of parking.
Which page is that of the guild's, if I can ask?
H4.
H4, okay.
Yeah, of Attachment 3.
Okay.
It doesn't really go into enough of them.
Where, let me see if I can find that.
That would be under advised, and that'd be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 paragraphs, only one line.
Two levels of parking stacked behind the street level. Should be counted as a single story. Okay, so with regard to that, we, staff has no additional provision or exception that would allow that. It's just, again, it's the alley and 45 feet, the limit of the mass is based on 45 feet. So we get away from a story that might be a little bit, let's say the ceiling of one story might be, drop up a little bit higher than the story next to it.
Chris, I think it'd be helpful just to go through the whole, what we're looking for is feedback on, you know, the proposed development standards that are proposed now. So let's just go through what it is, and, you know, I think there could have been different interpretations of what the council said at that meeting, because they didn't really give real clear direction, other than two stories off of El Camino Real and maintain that height, and if you can drop it down, the idea was three stories, but they also said, what Chris said, which is if it goes down below the grade, we don't care. So I think that the idea was, it's two stories mass off of El Camino Real and three-story mass off of the alley. And how that's stacked and levels is kind of independent discussion. So let's just go, and if the Planning Commission disagrees, then that's fine, you can make your recommendations and whatever you think is appropriate to fulfill the goals of the zone. Let's just go through the whole thing and show the different standards of the way they're developed now, and then we can then open it up for discussion.
Wayne, can you hold on to your question, or do you want to...
Not really, not really, because I listened to this, the discussion with the city council on February the 3rd, specifically for this. And while they did say you could go below grade, they did not say that you could observe from the alleyway no more than three stories, that's what they said. It's not three and a half stories, it's not four stories, it is three stories observed from the alleyway itself. That's what they said, that, yes, they said you could dig down, and that's fine, but it's not three and a half stories that you could observe from the alleyway, or four stories. That was, that, to me, was, I want to clarify that.
Well, I don't want to debate you, but the actual motion and what was, was actually voted upon was not that.
Okay, why don't we continue with the presentation and...
Okay, so I have the draft zoning text here, the ordinance for height. I can get into details on it. If you have any questions, rather than reread everything that we've done, I want to be here to answer questions and go over any particular information that maybe you want me to discuss again. I think it's just better use of, I want to answer your questions, I want to make as much time for your questions. Is there any questions about this right now?
Wayne, did you have another question?
No, I'm sure my line. Okay. So there is this graphic that had been presented, and the overall idea was having a measurement from the front lot line at the midpoint to establish a height ceiling that went all the way across the lot, and no part of the building, any building could go beyond that from a plate line point of view. And then you'd have additional ceiling for the top of roof. And there is a need, Commissioner Barnes had a question regarding how that would work in different circumstances, where the back might be taller than the ceiling, and how that would all play out. And so we created this graphic to show, in no case would the building go over that ceiling, that's the main idea. In the cases that, that the building would say be further down the back of the slope, it would always have to maintain that height of the three-story height limits that I had shown you in the general plan, the 45-foot top of roof and 37-foot plate line height. And then we also added a special measurement on what the two-story limitation would be, given the sloping topography, we came up some text for this. And because I think the consensus that we received from the commission was that there should be a number of story limit on El Camino Real, that from the beginning of this project, it was very clear from the council, and that side of the property is very clear, two stories. So that's what we did here and drafted this standard. There was a limited standard in the draft text, the staff reports, I just wanted to clarify, in all, in all the mixed-use zones, the minimum commercial floor area standard is .35 FAR. And so that's what staff has been proposing to include for the mixed-use 3.2 zone, it was not in your draft, so I wanted to make sure that you knew that. Is there any questions about this?
No questions.
Okay.
Sorry, Bart?
Want me to go back?
I want to hit you, Wayne.
Careful, I mean, I'm looking at your chart here.
Yes.
So the...
This is the staff report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Says 1 and 1.5. Page 3 of 5.
3 of 5. So you're...
For floor ratios?
Yeah, floor ratio, it's saying, commercial projects 1.0, mixed-use projects 1.5. However, for the, for the mixed-use zones in the zoning ordinance, there is an additional standard to this, that says for a mixed-use project, a minimum of the project, there'd have to be a .35 FAR of commercial uses. So that's what, that's what was emitted from this table, and I just want to make sure that I let you know that that would be in the next draft.
Okay, I under, okay, you're proposing to put it in there?
Yes.
Okay.
So if I understand this, we're saying that in mixed-use, mixed-use projects as a total can have a total of 1.5 FAR?
Yes.
The commercial projects portion of it can't have any more than 1 FAR, but must have at least .35 FAR?
Correct.
Correct? And all the rest of it comes from the residential?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, that's clear.
And there's a parking standards, where standard, basic parking standards, most common is one space per 300 square feet, and that includes offices, retail, banks. And restaurants are dictated by the number of seats, with the exception of takeout. So we're proposing to apply the same parking standards with the note that this zone is not in a pedestrian overlay, unlike the downtown and North Beach and the Pier Bowl area, where there's a recognized vision to have more pedestrian-oriented uses, in which you would have less of a demand for parking, that's what the, that's what the understanding has been in the past, and there is a reduced parking requirement for those areas. This is different in staff's perspective, because it is a commercial corridor, it's not a pedestrian overlay, so we're proposing to apply the standard parking rates for this zone.
Which are, which are generally higher than what we have in like North Beach or Pier Bowl or something, right?
Yes, yeah. And then there's some other standards I can go over if you'd like, but these are all general standards that apply to mixed-use projects, such as minimum open area standards, there's no setbacks required in the various mixed-use projects. And I want to mention that in 100% lot coverage. Now, looking at these standards, one could say, oh, that's, that's what someone could build, cross off the list, that's what they can build. But that's not how this process has worked in San Clemente, we have a design review process as the previous item of the agenda. There was a design review meeting, several of them, and much discussion about how much offsets should there be, the design elements, and ultimately came to a close of whether the project met all the required findings to be compatible with the neighborhood and meet the design guidelines and the urban design element policies. And so with that understanding, staff is going to apply the general requirements to all the mixed-use zones. This is going to be treated like the other mixed-use projects in the city. Is there any questions about this?
If it, go ahead. If it came before me, I look at minimum open area, if on multiple floors, 30% lot area. So you're talking balconies and things like that?
Yes, or roof decks, yeah.
So...
That's true.
The guy with a single story is going to have to give up 20%, so you're almost forcing him into going two-story. Because you've got, if you're a one-story project, you've got 20% area you've got to leave open. Then parking.
Okay.
Probably never see a one-story.
I doubt someone would, frankly, I mean, while someone could build a one-story building with the value of the land, I'd be surprised, someone's going to build a one-story building.
Michael?
Could you go back to the slide with parking?
Sure, there.
Okay, maybe I'm missing something here, but mixed-use has residential, and I don't see the parking requirement for that in there.
For residential?
Yeah.
Residential, the average is two spaces per unit.
Okay, so why wouldn't that be on the chart?
I just didn't put it on the chart.
Well, you see, this is...
That's just one small portion.
Okay, but, but this is what I was talking about, you know, for me, it gets really hard when I don't see that on there, and I'm wondering about this, and then, you know, you showed those sections, and we didn't have those in our, in our book, but I'm glad you did, but at the same time, those sections don't have like 25 feet high, real simple, dumb stuff. And so I'm trying to make this easy to grasp, because I think, I think there's, the devil in the details with this zoning ordinance. And I think it can be manipulated into being something that it shouldn't be. And so I'm trying to make it as straightforward and as simple to understand as possible. So all I'm saying is wherever we can make it that way, we should try to do it.
Okay.
And just remember, all the parking requirements are in Attachment 2 of your staff report for the whole general uses. And also remember, the Planning Commission has directed us to look at a lot of different aspects of parking, such as the grandfathering, you know, aspect of it. And in the coming phases of the zoning ordinance, we'll look again specifically at this general development standards for parking, because it applies throughout the town, not just to this one MU 3.2 zone. So just note that.
Wayne, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with you, Michael, that, you know, I'm reading some of the things in here that were in the staff report, and to me, you know, I'm a layman here, I'm not an architect, but, you know, they're not understandable to me. And it needs to be in simple English, and it needs to be understandable, so that the general public can understand what the zoning amendment should be and what it is. And to me, it's just, it's very convoluted, it's very, it's very difficult to read, it's not in plain English, and it needs to be. And so I really have a real concern with, you know, some of the things that are in this particular staff report, and I, quite frankly, I kept reading and reading and reading, and I just don't understand it. So I agree with you, Michael, I agree with you. And I did want to, I really am going to continue with my, my discussion of what the, what the city council actually recommended through a motion, because I have it here. It says, and this is the city council minutes, a regular meeting to February the 3rd, 2015. It's a motion by Councilmember Doncheck, seconded by Mayor Hamm, carried 401, Councilmember Brown abstaining, to initiate a general plan amendment that would modify the MU land use standard for the west side of El Camino Real to specify height limit to two stories along El Camino Real and three stories along the alley, period. That's what, that's what the motion was, and that's what passed. So I just want to be very clear about that as we go forward in our discussions.
And if I could respond, that's what we're proposing. We're proposing that, based upon the analysis that we've done, we're just not saying three stories, we're saying the mass of the building, the size of the building could not be more than three stories. That's what we're saying. How you divvy up the block and levels is a different matter.
And we can incorporate that into the standards, but if you look at this square right here, this block right here, this could be, you could fit four levels in there, you could fit two levels in there, you could fit two levels and it could be higher. So what you, to control the mass, you should be controlling the height. And if you want, if you want no more than a three-story look off the alley, we ought to decide what that height is, if it's 40 feet, if it's 45 feet, what that number is, and then that's how we can control it. Or if you really care about how many levels there are, then we can do the same thing in the front, which is, we specified in the first 20 feet, it had to be two levels, so people couldn't squeeze a third level in there, that's the concern, that can be accommodated too, we need that kind of direction.
Well, that's the direction that I would like to give.
Okay.
And if I can say that, I don't see anything wrong with trying to put as much dimension to this as we can, we can say height, and we can say stories, and we're sounding like we're duplicating it, fine, but there is what, there is a, go back, right there, that's the kind of diagram that I start to have a problem with, because now it looks to be more than three stories on the backside. And I seem to remember that we had a project presented to us some time ago, which in fact had that same situation, and I was struggling with it because of the intent of three stories on the backside. And so I agree with Wayne, and maybe we need to be more cognizant of that, because I think this is when it starts to drift, and this is when I think the devil's in the details, and this is when I think all of a sudden you get the backside of a building that's way too big. That's what I worry about.
Okay, well, let's keep a pin on that and make sure we cover that in discussion, and we'll let staff continue with their presentation. Wayne, I'm sorry, did you have another question?
No, I don't, thank you.
So, yeah.
That's okay, I can go back. I'm done. So I can answer your questions, I, yeah, if the commission wants to specify some different standards, then we'll... I, yeah, if the commission wants to specify some different standards, then we're, we're happy to look into it. I think some of the, the challenge that we found in this particular area is, when you have a basement structure where there's a parking garage, a level parking that is underneath the alley sometimes, for various reasons, maybe it's the size of the grade differential between the, the front along El Camino Real and the alley, you're trying to dig down enough to put the parking there, right? As much, as much as you can below the alley level. But you can't, there are limitations on that because, due to cost. There's also limitations due to engineering standards pertaining to the approach, driveway that goes into the parking. So there's all these things that play out, and sometimes you have that situation, Commissioner Smith, regarding the little area that was, it looked like more than three stories, because the parking garage...
I know, I understand that.
The parking garage is like two feet above the ground. So if you say three, three stories only, and you need the two feet above the alley for the parking garage, it gets complicated, and that's what our concern was. Our concern was that, and also it's just a different, staff believe that in this particular case, look, driving down the alley and taking a look at the homes and what's already there.
Okay, but, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna fall back on the project that was presented to us. I remember looking at the back end of that, and it looked to me like there was at least three and a half stories.
Okay.
I'm sorry, is, forgive me for interrupting, is this a project that we've continued and we're going to be hearing in the future? Then we shouldn't be discussing it here, I'm sorry.
I'm using that as an example of what I'm concerned about.
I, I understand, but it's, yeah, we, we run into, into brown act issues with that, so, yeah. We can talk about hypotheticals, but we can't talk about any particular...
Hypothetical.
Yeah.
Okay, hypothetically, I guess I have a question then, to, to help me understand what the commission wants. Is the concern the visual appearance of level, levels? Like how many windows and where one floor ends and another? Or is it how big the building is?
Both.
Okay. Bart?
My concern is not, in the rear, is not in necessary the levels. If there's no openings or something, and you have two levels of parking, and you can get it within a height limit we set, whether it's a basement and three above it, if it doesn't look like a four-story, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for mass and the impact on the adjacent properties. We're not looking at making something unfeasible. But if they have the same impact, what's the difference?
I, I think, from what I'm hearing so far, I, I, I don't think, in the planning commission, I think the, the basic height limit, I'm kind of judging from what we've heard in the past, too, the basic height limit, we don't, generally don't have a problem with. We don't have a problem with saying no more than two stories on El Camino Real. I think the question is, is back here, what if someone wants to do something where they do kind of a half-floor sort of a thing? Hypothetically, and...
Antithetically.
And my feeling about that is, well, there, there's two things, perhaps clarifying what direction was from council, but, but my personal feeling is, is that especially with a larger building, you could actually increase the architectural interest. If you've got a portion of it that, you know, is kind of stepped up halfway, so if you remember like Horton Plaza in San Diego, might be a, a kind of an extreme example, but they've got half floors and things stepped down. But the height is the height, and you can't go over the height. In addition, you have design review that can look at an architecture, an architectural plan and say, you know what, the way you've done this, it sure makes the whole building look like four stories, even though it comes into the heights limit, we might have a problem with that. So it, it may be that some of this, I think we need to resolve what, you know, you know, make, make sure we're clear on what council's direction was, but the look of three stories versus a look of four stories, I think maybe is something we can resolve through our, our design standards as well, so that we can try and leave room for architectural interest and architectural variation, so.
There's a design guideline that we have that promotes the, promotes maximizing the amount of un, of building surfaces without openings. So uninterrupted, so wall mass, right? So for a Spanish architecture project, which this area would now be in the, the architectural overlay, typically with Spanish architecture, you don't want a bunch of openings. And so, so it's, it's something to consider that, that when there is an opportunity to have an opening in a, in a carefully placed location, that could improve the look of the building, then I think that, that was something that we are considering. And we just don't, I think, given that most likely residential would be facing that side of the project, not commercial. So with that in mind, you might have a desire to have more balconies or other elements where people are coming outside. You might have a, a split level unit, because when I, at one point I did a drawing, Commissioner Smith, where I, I actually scaled it out, and I am not a architect, but I, I did my best to scale it out. And I actually did find that in a lot of cases, it seemed to be where it made sense to have a split level on occasion. For my limited experience, it seemed to, to, to help in some instances to, to fit the building in, but I, I think it all just comes down to what the commission's position is on what they think is too big.
Bart?
Do you have any feel for how many of these M U three-zone lots are a seventeen and oversplit versus less?
The grade difference?
Yeah.
I, you know, Jim would probably know that.
I mean, are we focusing too much on the extreme versus the standard ones where it's less?
Oh, maybe Jim knows that one.
Commissioner Crandall, I'm Jim here, and consultant on this project to the city. The, generally speaking, the differential between front to back is under ten feet. There, there are a couple of lots that get up to, if my recollection is right, maybe fourteen or so. I don't recollect one seventeen right at this point in time. And I also offer that, that, that this testimony is based on taking corner points from the intersections of the street. So the, these slopes are not, are not constant across there, there's some indelation, so you may have circumstances where you, we've, we've probably oversimplified the graphics by showing a diagonal line, they don't fall that way, they, they fall like you see on, on sections on, on the previous project as well. So, so, but, but generally speaking, it's, it, it's not, I don't recollect one over seventeen feet within the, within the subject area.
Well, I would, I'm sorry, do you have another question?
There are twenty-four lots, and I'll get into this through another presentation, but there are twenty-four lots, and eighteen of them have slopes. Now, I, I'm not, you know, I'm a land surveyor, so I can't tell you what the slope is, but that's what I, that's what I counted.
We have a, maybe this is a good time, we have a, Wayne put together a visual of all the existing lots in this zone, we can go through that quickly, if you want to stick on and take a look.
I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering if we want to open the public hearing quickly, let the public comment, and we can move on to our more formal discussion.
You know, since we're talking about all of this right now, I'd rather, at this point, if I, if, if possible, just go through this, it's a short presentation...
Okay.
Of, of it, because I think it's important for us to understand what we're dealing with here.
Okay, great, let's do this, and then let's open the public hearing.
What I did, I, I think it's important to take a look at this from the standpoint of, of the entire street, because we've been focusing on a hypothetical situation. And so what I did, I got the, I, I got all the A P N numbers, I got all the square feet of each of the lots that we, there, and I took photos. And let's just go through the photos right now, just to get a, a sense of what we have here. And it was interesting, because we have a hundred and ninety-seven thousand square feet of all of these lots. And, and, and as you go through them, you can go through the slides if, if you want to, Jim. Yeah.
If you're going from, just so we know, we're going from pain south.
Okay. And what I found was, just going, for example, the, the Lineskis is probably not going to be redeveloped. It's been there since nineteen thirty-seven, it's not, it's not going to be redeveloped, it's going to be there for probably another hundred years. But with a hundred and ninety-seven thousand square feet, we have a hundred and sixty-four thousand roughly, that has a potential for being redeveloped over the years, whether it's ten years from now, twenty years from now, or whenever. So that's eighty-three potential of all of these lots that have, have the ability to be redeveloped. And certainly Seven-Eleven, now the, the T-shirt place there certainly has the potential with that parking lot, with that large parking lot there. This one here at thirteen oh-two, which is now an office building, has a massage parlor on the front, probably isn't going to be redeveloped over a period of time. But now we have these vacant lots certainly, and I have a question of why the top tune lot is not included in the M U three-point-two.
My reading of the minutes, if I recall, there was a, a value in keeping some neighborhood commercial on that side as a hub between two corridors, as acting as if a neighborhood commercial component, I think primarily for tying that to the other side of the street, and then also for services down below in the residential. That's my understanding.
I believe that's what the planning associates recommend.
Okay, we can just continue with the slides there. So I, you know, I took the photos, I walked this area, I walked the El Camino, I walked the alleyways, I wanted to see for myself what we're talking about here. So it, it's so important to understand, for all of us to understand, what really is human scale, what is going to be pedestrian friendly, how can we make this area really, truly pedestrian friendly? I remember that we took, many of us took a field trip to Avenue de Granada and Avenue de Victoria several months ago, and we commented that none of the properties that we saw that were recently developed had been, are, are really pedestrian friendly. But I'll get into that a little bit later after the public testimony, but I think it's important for us to really understand, how can we design this street to be pedestrian friendly, human scale, and interactive that we're talking about here? That's what we're really talking about on this street. So thanks for showing the slides, Jim.
All right then, I will, I'll, I can't remember, did we specifically close the public hearing? I can't remember the procedural thing. All right, I'm just going to open and close again if that's not a problem. All right, very good, then I'm going to open the public hearing, and I have one card. If anybody else would like to speak, please provide our card to our secretary, Michael Luna.
Good evening, everybody, again, Michael Luna, local architect and resident of San Clemente. With regard to height, and, which is, you know, the city council has made it very clear that we want to continue the two-story limit along El Camino Real. And that is the primary focus, really, that, that's where, you know, this all started, is we want two stories on El Camino Real. So height has been established in, in conversation so far, nothing's been finally adopted, but with regard to height, the thing about achieving our two stories, we have guidelines in place now for our mixed use projects, and unfortunately, there have not been hardly any mixed use projects that have actually been developed, gotten off the paper and getting built, so nobody really knows how these things work. But the height, the, excuse me, the guidelines that are in place for a mixed use project for twenty percent open area and thirty percent open area will create a lot of courtyards and a lot of public interface and pedestrian orientation, and will provide tremendous relief for El Camino Real. So if you've got twenty-five, excuse me, thirty-five feet, two stories limit on El Camino Real, and we're asked to bring this all the way back, we should re-keep flexibility for the rear elevations and the rear design of these sites, so that architectural interest can be created here. With regard, if you just say, oh, you know, three stories only across the back, it's going to create very rigid designs and very rigid solutions without creating flexibility for the architect to be able to play with architectural forms and levels and so forth, to get anywhere near a one-point-five-floor area ratio. One-point-five-floor area ratio was established, is my understanding, is because this is an area of town, one of the only areas of town left, where density can occur. And so i- if you say strictly three level or three stories from the back, that lowest level is going to be just parking, period. Because you can't do anything else with it if you're set with three stories, period. You can't do any, so you end up with two stories, and you'll, because of the twenty and thirty percent, you'll never get anywhere near one-point-five if you really want to get some density in this area of town, which has been identified. With regard to parking, we're talking about creating pedestrian overlay, pedestrian interface, but yet we, we want to use the, the old parking standard or the typical parking standard in town, when realistically, a mixed use, this would be the only mixed use designation and zoning that I know of in the state, that doesn't have some parking reduction for the mixed use scenario. The whole intent of the mixed use is to create a situation where you create less trips, more pedestrian interface, and henceforth the need for less cars, more bikes, more pedestrian activity. So to, to, to place more strict parking restrictions is only going to limit, again, development, and again, you'll never get the, the one-point-five-five-floor area ratio. I'd say let there be flexibility in the back in terms of, let creativity create great projects with design control through design guidelines that we already have in place.
Thank you. And Nick Buchanan, and that's the last card I have, so.
Good evening, planning commission, Mr. Chairman, staff. I guess I bought a very expensive ticket to a very lengthy debate. Mister, Mister, Mister Chairman, please keep me on track, because I'm going to talk a lot about hypotheticals, obviously they've come up, so, you know, just if, if I say anything that's inappropriate. I'm obviously a property owner, I bought a ticket to a race because I watched a fairly lengthy debate about a general plan that ultimately got approved. Most, not all of you, some of the seats have changed, but this board ultimately approved a designation in this particular area in, I don't think, November of two thousand and thirteen, which was at least in, in my, as a member of the public's opinion, a, an incentive to try and incentivize some development down here. And that, that this, this planning commission ultimately, if, depending on who you talk to in the general G, G pack, I've talked to probably somewhere between thirty and fifty percent of the folks that were in the G pack, there's, everyone tells you a different story of where, what they thought they heard, whether it was three stories on El Camino Real or two stories on El Camino Real, and it goes back and forth. I understand it took a long time, it took, took place over probably a period of twenty-four to, you know, thirty-six months as part of that five-year general plan update, but, you know, there are obviously a lot of opinions out there, and, and I, you know, I submitted a, okay, someone I know submitted a hypothet, hypothetically submitted a project responding to a, a, an initiative that I saw as a very positive one, and one of the reasons I think it's important is, the city of San Clemente, I know we're not a completely developed city, but a lot of the beach cities in, in Southern California are very close to being built up, and we're getting very close to being built up. And we have an allocation of housing needs. We got a lot, a lot of young people in the city that do want to buy housing, there's a serious shortage of housing. And providing urban infill housing, which is what this is, where you're across the street from a major grocer, you're within a, you know, you're less than half a mile from T Street Beach, you're close to downtown, you can walk to downtown if you want to avoid a D U I coming back. It's smart, sustainable urban growth, you're getting people to where they want to live and where they want to be, where they want to spend their weekends, and you're getting them off the road. People can bike from here, they can walk, I mean, this, this is the epitome of mixed use. Downtown is no longer going to be true, true mixed use, it's destination-serving commercial. We restricted the height down there, you're going to see very little residential development above the, the downtown and Avenue de Del Mar area because of... because of the height restriction. This is an area, this is classic mixed-use. And this is where our mixed-use parking requirements should be applied. This is where we should be incentivizing people to put parking underground and to provide the limited amount of housing. You know, it's limited as to how much housing we're gonna be able to provide in this city. Providing a little bit of it would be good. So I wanted to touch on the stories on the alley. I, my impression has always been that it was two stories on the front. I've met with every single one of the council members. That's a conversation, you know, two stories up on the front, take that height limit all the way across, whatever you can fit in the back, good luck to you. You know, the design guidelines actually require that the building set back. And so as the building sets back, in most cases, you keep within three, three stories anyway, because if you take a line through, the building's sufficiently set back that any parking entrance or whatever of the alley would keep it to, you know, to, to three stories. That's a technical issue. Wanted to address the minimum FAR point. I think retail will do okay down there. It's gonna be neighborhood-serving retail. But I don't think it's gonna be a home run. I think we're gonna have to cut our lease rates to be able to keep it full. It's gonna be banks and, you know, local, local restaurants, maybe real estate brokerages. I don't, in my personal opinion, I think it's good to keep some retail and commercial there because I think it provides a buffer for the residential, and that's a good thing. But I, I wouldn't, I, I think we're gonna have retail, if we, four-point-three-five, you know, that, that's a fairly large amount of retail on these spaces. I think you're gonna have retail space that's end up, they're gonna struggle, it's gonna go dark. You're gonna have high turnover there. And we end up, we're gonna end up having landlords that are gonna put tenants in there just to keep the place full that are gonna be less desirable uses. And I sat through a planning commission meeting not that long ago where Commissioner Eggleston spoke about a liberty tax, you know, person out there. People are gonna have to get creative and do all sorts of things that I, I, I questioned the success ultimately of putting, trying to put too much commercial down there, is I guess what I was trying to say. And so my main, my main things were points for parking. I, I think in this location, we should be applying the mixed-use parking standard. Mixed-use parking standard is, is for the MU three area. This is MU three point two. Every other area where you get an MU three point oh, three point one, whether it's North El Camino Real, Pierbal or downtown, we use a mixed-use parking for, for the obvious reasons that mixed-use, you have office, you have retail, you have, you have residential. And, you know, especially in a location like this where you have so many residents in the immediate vicinity of neighborhood-serving retail, obviously, or commercial, there, there's an opportunity for folks to walk here. And it's a great pedestrian experience. Again, on the, the minimum FAR, you know, I think, I think it's appropriate to have commercial there, but I think it probably should be lower, maybe point-two-five, point-three. And then on the stories, I'm, that debate's gonna play itself out, I guess it's gonna go where it's gonna go. But I, you know, again, I bought a piece of property based on the one-and-a-half FAR and the language that the general plan allowed. And I think if we cut back the stories and try and put, you know, additional parking requirements on here, I'm, I feel like I'm standing on a, on a, on an island under a rising tide and the ability to try and get the density that I thought I was allowed into it. It's just, you know, the sand's falling through my fingers at this point. I'm, you know, I don't know that we're gonna be able to achieve what, what we thought we were gonna be able to do if we put too many restrictions on the property. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. I will, if there's no one else, I will close the public hearing and open it up again for discussion. Wayne?
I, I wanted to respond to Michael Luna's comment. And I have the greatest respect for Michael Luna, as an architect, to say the least. He's done some incredible projects here in San Clemente. But it's so important to have an, an alleyway visual that's going to be compatible, not compatible at least, it's not gonna be compatible, but at least be halfway pleasant with the residential neighborhoods that are behind it. And, and compliment, thank you. It, it, it's so important. And two stories in the front are important, but how it looks on the backside is going to be critical for the residences there. And we don't have to create a block wall in, in the back. It can have articulation, it can have interest. But we don't have to create a, a block wall in the, in the, in the back. As far as that, this area should not be, or cannot be, commercial, I have to disagree with that. I think the, the people in the area, in the neighborhoods in this area are looking for a little downtown area that they, a commercial area that they can go to, whether it's a bakery, whether it's a restaurant, or whatever, to, to really have the opportunity to, to shop in that particular area. And I think that's what's important. I mean, what are we here for, anyway? We're, we're here to create pedestrian-friendly, human-scale type of street that's going to be, it's going to be hopefully a success in that area. But the last thing I want is to have banks and, and real estate offices opened on this street. And that's where I think it's important for us to consider how we can make this into a pedestrian-friendly area, walkable area, that people from the neighborhoods can walk up and walk along the street and, and, and enjoy in this particular area. For it to be just offices and, and banks and real estate offices, I, I just, I don't think that's what we're here for, quite frankly.
Yeah, I, I understand what Wayne's saying, but that street's been there a long time, and that hasn't happened. And it's zoned to have the kind of things you're asking for. So obviously, financially, it just doesn't work. I mean, when this street evolved, it was a major thoroughfare from here to San Diego. People were stopping and whatnot. And, you know, we're a town of sixty-five thousand. If we're not getting people in from outside the city, I'm not sure we can fill all those spaces, to be perfectly honest. If we put commercial all the way down El Camino, it's gonna be like it is now. There's gonna be a lot of vacancy, there's gonna be no incentive to build. I think we've kind of gotten hung up on the severe slope sites. If you look at the ones that are in the chart and the ones that are more typical than the ones where you could possibly get more than three levels, I think the majority of them can't even get three levels, actually, unless they really drop down under grade. So I think we're kind of focusing possibly on the extreme and overlooking what's really gonna happen there. And I think revitalizing it with mixed-use projects. The worst thing we can do is restrict it where we're gonna have to start getting parking off of El Camino, which is a possibility on some of these lots, where you really don't have the, you've got kind of a mid-level height, where it's only a seven-foot drop or something. They're either gonna have to go way underground. And we want to make sure we don't create a situation where we're gonna get parking lots in front of buildings. We don't want that. We want to encourage them to come off the alley. And really, the residential uses don't use the alley. They're fronting on their own streets. So consider it a backyard. And that's really what the alley is to the commercial building. They're taking access off it. So there's a big separation, you've got the full width of the alley. But I want to make sure we're not short-sighted and forget why we're doing this. We're really trying to revitalize El Camino Real. And we want to do it as best we can. And that services the entire community rather than just the residences that are adjacent to it.
Bonnie?
I'd like to talk a little bit about landscaping and setbacks. When you have landscaping and setbacks, it really improves the aesthetics and blending in and softening the architecture. And it also makes it more pedestrian-inviting. If you're walking along, you see the color, you have some shade. And it also, there's an environmental concern that we can be in the forefront of. I know Mike Luna could be helpful in this and become famous for doing this. If we have land, some setbacks in these, I, to me, you're talking about the look from the back alley. To me, no setbacks on the sides, building after building after building, is really boring-looking. And it would not be inviting to me is, for walkability and pedestrian-friendly without some breaking up with the landscaping. And so if we do, if we do put some landscaping in with reasonable setbacks, this is what you'll also get besides aesthetics. You'll absorb greenhouse gases and produce fresh oxygen. We talked about that a little bit already. Provides shade to cool the building. It reduces the energy consumption needed to cool the building. And it provides habitat, and it provides the interest. And I think for this five-acre footprint, with the potential of one hundred and twenty residential units with two cars each, if you use the carbon calculators provided on the government website, electrical use is estimated to produce over two million greenhouse gases to serve the residents for that many units. And with two-hundred-and-forty vehicles, if we have that many, it's over two million pounds of greenhouse gases as well. So we have to start looking at the, the footprint that we're making and the effect on climate change. We're going to have to face it sometime, how about now? And it's, it's well documented with satellite measurements that urban development causes an increase in the surrounding temperatures. So trees and shrubs reduce this heating effect. If you have a reasonable setback, you can put some trees in, you can help the environment, and you can make it much more desirable and aesthetic.
Michael?
Okay. I'm, I'm not trying to pick on hypothetical specifics. What I'm trying to do here is gauge what we're trying to do in a, in a, in a knowing way that's simple to, to implement. And, and I don't think to, to do that is to take a simple plan of two in the front and three in the back, and then all of a sudden, it's not that anymore, it's something else. And it's not that parking requirement, it's not that something else. And so all of a sudden, it's, it's not really what we're supposed to be doing in the three-point-two zone. And, and that's my problem. I, I, I'm happy with designs that, that fit that and work within it. And I'm, and I'm struggling, because I, I wanna, I wanna do what I think the city wants to do. And it seems to me that Wayne just said, two in the front, three in the back, sounds like a height of thirty feet in the front with a roof height of thirty-five on El Camino. And, you know, some simple stuff like that. And that's how I see my job. I see my job as fitting into that envelope correctly so that the scale of what we do fits into the notion of what this wants to be. And I don't, I don't want to have to, to free-fly it, to rethink it. And, and I suspect, though, that if we haven't figured this out enough, and I'm hearing that maybe we haven't, is that we, we might have to go back to the drawing boards and, and take a look at the floor area ratios and what makes sense for developers to, to fly, because we do want this to be successful. And, and I don't think we want to adopt standards that just don't work. But on the other hand, I'm, I'm of the ilk that there is a spirit of this being two-story in the front, three in the back, relatively human scale, like Wayne says. And, and, and I want to, I want to obey those rules. That's all I want to do. I want to live within those rules, and I don't want to have to go and make exceptions right out from the beginning because somebody else thinks they have a different interpretation. I just want to fit to the rules. If we get a plan comes in here, fits in the rules, I'm gonna support it a hundred percent. So that's where I'm coming from. And I'm beginning to wonder about the economics that we're, we're doing. If we, if we're setting up an economic model here that's not gonna fly, then we, we really do need to reevaluate it.
So, Michael, this, like this graphic we have up here, basically the box and the plate height method, does this fit with your thinking? I mean, does it describe the kind of thing that you're thinking of? Two in the front, three in the back, this is kind of the envelope?
I think it does perfectly.
Okay, so if we, so, so if this were something that we, you know, gave a thumbs up to and sent to council you, something like this would be something you would be in favor of?
I, I do think, though, that we need to figure out how high the back should ultimately be. And I think we should define that that's three stories, just like we're defining the front's two stories. And apparently, we're defining the play line at thirty and the roof at thirty-five on El Camino. That's very understandable. That's all I'm looking for. Something simple, boom, and, and then I don't have to, I don't have to make a judgment about whether or not this is fitting into that plan or not. It either does or doesn't, so.
I, I think, am I not mistaken? I, I think that that's what they're proposing. And it, it sort of depends on where the front of the building is, of the zero lot line, or it's farther back along the slope, depends on the height of the building. That's kind of the, the variable, but it's never gonna be higher than that.
So right now, the standard doesn't, I mean, you can get, see what the rule is in, something becomes subterranean at the point where it is sixty percent below grade in terms of definition, in the current code. So you can have a situation here where this kind of, you know, the step, the steepness of this lot, you know, if this is the, the cap right here, this line right here, the steepness of this lot, if it's steeper, you know, you can fit another story in, depending on where that line goes, right? Whoops. So if this comes down like this, obviously, you have more room to put things in, unless you have some cap on the height in the back. Or some kind of requirement, like you said, that there's no more than any one place in the lot. If you step it down, can't be more than three levels, if that's what you're getting at. So my question would be for the, the, the commission is that, you know, we could step this building back, you know, and stair-step down a slope conceivably, and you could look at it from the back, and it could look like it's four levels. But not at any one point in the building, if you took cross-sections, would it be more than three stories high? That would be okay, I would assume, but, you know, I, I'm not sure from the direction I'm getting if that's what you're thinking. So we could, we could develop standards that said there could be no more than three stories at any one point in the building, if that's what the goal is. And two stories long El Camino Real, I think we've already established that pretty, pretty clearly in the current definition. Another way to cap it is, right now, the standard says that you can't be more than forty-five feet high based on our, our current height calculation of averaging. So no place would you get more than a forty-five-foot-high structure. And if that forty-five-foot structure of the slopes severely enough is below this line right here, then that would be the height limit. There would be some form of a step-back in, in the back. So another way of, rather than levels, to deal with this, and that's, I guess, what I was having a problem with, the way I interpreted what the city council said earlier, was I thought that they said that they wanted the back to, to be no, no higher than a certain look, but not necessarily controlled levels. Maybe I'm wrong, Wayne, in what they actually voted on. But that's your control, your two options are, we can, you know, if, if the levels are really a concern, we can develop standards that, that control levels. And I don't even, I'm, I'm not calling stories because, as I just said, below grade, if that's a level, you know, if that's a concern, we can, you know, if it's something against the number of levels because of intensity, we can control that as well.
I think, I'm sorry, I think Bonnie had a button up.
Okay. I'm with Mike, I like the definite amount. I don't see the backside of it as being blocks, as suggested by Mister Luna. I see, let's say hypothetically, you have one building that has maybe, oh, let's say, seven residential and three commercial. And from the back, there will be balconies, and there will be window treatments, and there'll be enies and little setback things as it approaches that. The next building over, I envision with a nice, reasonable setback and landscaping, it will be different. It won't have, be exactly the same. It will be different number, number of residential. Maybe there'll be a restaurant on the bottom. And it will look different from the back. Any skilled architect can make it not look like a block. So I don't have any, I, I'm fine with the, the set height limit. If Mike, as an architect, needs something like that, I'm not going to argue it, to make it clear. If, if he can understand it easily otherwise, then we can't expect the general public to.
I do not mind if they excavate and have another level behind there. As long as from the alleyway itself, you can only see three stories, period. I don't mind if they excavate and go down, that's fine. But I don't want to see three stor, I don't want to see four stories or three-and-a-half stories from the back. I want, because I think it's going to dramatically affect the, the, the livability of, of the people that are living adjacent to the alleyway. And I do want to comment about, about Bart, what you said, okay? I think we have to have a vision here. And I think we have to have a vision along this street that it is going to be commercial. We're gonna have restaurants, we're gonna have bakeries, we're gonna have, we're gonna have an opportunity for the people in the southwest area of town to have a place to go instead of, instead of Avenue de Del Mar or the outlet center. I think they want a neighborhood area with, with restaurants and so forth. If we didn't have a vision back in the mid-eighties for Avenue de Del Mar, we would still be in the same place back then. But the city came in, in nineteen eighty-five, and they But the city came in in 1985, and they put in infrastructure. They put in the sidewalks. They put in, they took some horrible signs down. They put in trees. They invested in the community, and we had a vision for Avenue de Del Mar. And it took a little while, but look what it is today, because we had a vision. We had a vision. And I think it's important to have that vision for this area of South El Camino Real. And I think it's so important that we have the parking there in this area so that it does not spill out into the residential streets. And certainly, the people along these streets don't want to have more parking problems on their street than they already do. But I did come up with some other proposed standards, which are very much in line with what staff recommended, and I don't know if this is the time to show them on the screen or not, but I'd like for us to consider these standards along with staff's standards so that we can run parallel to this. And in fact, perhaps we can, it'll eventually be that we would present both of these proposed standards to city council for them to make a determination. Let them make the determination on this. And the first one there is reducing the dwellings to 1 to 20 units per acre. And we can get into the mathematics of that later, but the second one is the building height. It's essentially the same as what the PROS standard is there. The tower height is the same. The biggest difference, if you want to scroll up a bit there, are the setbacks. We cannot have zero setbacks. We have to have setbacks that are landscaping setbacks along the street and along the area there. Otherwise, we're going to have blocked buildings there. And I know that, you know, these could obviously be compromised under whatever, but again, I think we should at least take a straw vote here as to whether we should at least take a look at both proposed standards, one and two, and then present these to the city on that. And we have a second and third-story floor setback there, the second and third floor of 10 feet each. Maximum floor area is the same, if you want to scroll down a little bit, a little bit more there. And 1.5 is the same. The lot coverage should not be 100 percent, should not be 100 percent. I came up with 85 percent. Urban open area is the same there. The number of trees should be based upon the square feet of the lot area, for example. I put in 115 gallon per thousand square feet of lot area. Parking is related to the standards as per the city code. And we should not have interior garages with doors. Why not? It's going to be used for storage. They're going to be used for storage. I'm an appraiser, and 95 percent of the houses that I go to use their garages for storage. Because what's going to happen if those have doors on them and they're used as storage, guess what? The parking is going to be down on the street for the residential areas. So, I mean, we can discuss this, we can take a straw vote to determine here if we should be presenting both to the city council and let them make the determination here, but it gives them the flexibility here.
I'm going to chime in here for a moment. First, I agree with you with the interior garages, because I know you're right. I live in a high-density area or medium-density area, and people use those a lot for storage. I do think we should encourage people to use parking for parking. So if we can do something like that, I think it's a real good thing to do. Regarding the two standards, I think that we should discuss it as much as we need to, but my personal take on it is that council has asked us to give them a solution, you know, us to have to give them a solution and us to approve it. So we should probably present to them, you know, one, you know, one result, possibly with certain, you know, fine-grained alternatives if we think, you know, they want to consider some things. I'd rather do that than, you know, my kind of vote on the straw poll would be rather that rather than kind of two distinct standards and have them pick it. Having said that, I did want to talk a little bit too about some of the things we were talking about earlier. I worry that, you know, we talk a lot about the zoning and the zoning ordinance and trying to make sure things happen using that one tool. And we have other tools at our disposal that not only do we use, but we kind of have to use. And some of these things, like landscaping, for instance, we're talking about a landscaping setback, we can propose, or have, not propose, but have in our design standards, a certain amount of landscaping that almost dictates that there has to be some level of setback on the building in order to incorporate the landscaping. You know, they wouldn't be able to add all the landscaping that they needed to add if they didn't, you know, at least have part of the building setback. But I think that there are reasons for the zero-lot setback that, you know, that make it more amenable to that walking environment. We have zero-lot setbacks in downtown for just that reason. So not that we, you know, I'm not just saying, you know, we must have zero-lot setbacks, but what I'm really doing is trying to encourage us to, even though our job here is to focus on the zoning ordinance, to remember that we do have our, you know, urban design too as a tool, as an inevitable tool, that's going to be applied to this. When I see these, you know, we have these graphics of these boxes showing the envelope of what we want to be on that site, I think it's important to remember is that's not going to be a building. God help us if it is a building, right? And we don't want to force architects and designers into a situation where in order to get the FAR, they're just building out to, you know, whatever setbacks they can build out to, and they'll build these square buildings in order to do that without much differentiation. And then if we say in our design guidelines, well, you have to have so much differentiation, they might throw up their hands possibly and say, you know, you can't fit that differentiation into that level of FAR and square footage and make it pencil out. So I, these things are important to all of us. I just think that we need to make sure we don't try to do everything in our zoning ordinances, and remember that there are some things best left, like the landscaping, for instance, that are, well, landscape is going to have certain percentages, but the specifics of it, that might be best left to our design guidelines, and so we can use that as a tool and give ourselves and the architects a lot more flexibility in terms of how the building looks and how the setbacks are. Because then we can say, here's your envelope, but so help you, it better have the right setback. So help you, it better not look like four or five stories from the alley. You know, regardless of how many stories you have, we don't want it to look like four stories. So we look at it and says, that looks like four stories. Sorry, you know, go back to the design review and fix it. I think we should make, let's just remember, we have that as a tool, and I would prefer us to kind of lean on that tool rather than say, you know, here's the box that you can do as the zoning ordinance. So I just want us to maybe keep in mind that we've got that flexibility and that subjectivity that we, at our disposal, and let's not throw that out in favor of trying to define everything in the zoning ordinances. So Bart?
Yeah, I've got a question for Jim. The basic commercial zone is still applicable, correct? Under the MU?
Or you can do all commercial? Yes.
And when the general plan was implemented, it was represented to those property owners that their general, their commercial zone would stay the same, but then they had the opportunity of the MU zone also, correct?
Yeah, and they had the option of all commercial or residential mixtues with commercial.
So if we start putting restrictions for setbacks that aren't in the commercial zone, we are pretty much down-zoning what they can do now for what we're going to be asking them to do. And I'm not sure, the way the general plan was represented to them when we changed the zone, whether that's appropriate or not. I mean, it's a great vision. I grant you that 100 percent. But if I was a property owner and I didn't complain about the change in zone, it would have probably been because I thought it was an upzoning rather than a downzoning. And it sounds like we're trying to take opportunities somewhat away from the property owners.
I think you're not, because the FAR under the current zoning is .35, and we're raising it to 1.0 for commercial. So they're getting more developable area than they had previously.
Even if we take setbacks away? That's where I'm concerned.
Well, I don't, the 1.0 might not be achievable, but I don't know what number that would be. I don't know if it would fall below .35.
Yeah, I think we need to consider that. And, but I agree totally that we need a vision and we need to make it usable, and I think we're still hung up on a few severe lots versus the majority of the lots. And if we looked at, say, an average lot, we might have a little easier way of coming up with a solution.
Well, Bart, I would encourage you to do what I did also, is just walk the alleyways and see the lots there, you know?
So before we continue, I have a quick administrative thing I want to get people's alignment on. We're getting, starting to get a little bit late. I have, what I've identified is, I think, three items for us to either make a decision on or give direction to staff to or to continue. So let me tell you what I think those are. If you guys think there's more or different, let me know. I just kind of want to get that straight so we can focus our discussion, and then, you know, then we'll continue. One is, is that I think we probably would want to give some, ask staff to give us some clarity on what's being proposed, and I think we probably need to identify kind of exactly where we need that clarity, pertaining to what Michael and Wayne were discussing. I think we have a question on three, do we have a strict three-story limit, literally three ceilings of where people can stand? Or is it a height limit, like I say, you know, 30, 35-foot plate line, and whatever happens inside of there is what happens?
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
Okay. When you say three levels, is that three levels visual from the alleyway itself?
I think that's one of the things for us to determine. So, but, you know, what do we mean by three levels? You know, that sort of thing. The other thing I saw was that, I think you wanted to take a straw vote, should we propose two standards to the city or just one or something else? So those are the, so those are the three things that I see are in front of us right now from our discussions. Does anyone have anything else or need clarification?
You forgot the environmental direction to start considering our footprint effects on climate change.
That's something for a general plan.
But anyway, maybe you'll find some other point once we move on in the discussion.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that we were kind of in alignment with that, that we'll focus on that and try to, you know, try to make decisions on those three things. Okay.
I'd just like to suggest that before we necessarily say we have to cook up two different proposals, that we ought to try to see if we can live with one. Now, you said, Jim, something very interesting. We said we want three stories in the back, and that's kind of what I'm hearing that the city council wants. That's what was voted on. That's what I'm understanding that the G-PAC wanted, and that's the nature of the beast. And if somebody comes in here and it's three and a half stories, it ain't going to fly. And it's not, it's not going to fly because it doesn't fit that rule, not that we're going to make exceptions to that rule. That's what I'm trying to say. If we start taking what is in theory very simple, just like Wayne said, I don't care if it goes underground, if it's a fourth-story underground, if as long as it's underground and it's not jacking up the thing to another half level, that's where I've got a problem, because then we warp the envelope. And I don't intend that everything's going to be a perfect shape that fits that. What that envelope is, is it gives you a working area for an architect to get creative, and it's not restrictive other than it says, these are the things that this particular zoning is trying to achieve. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to achieve a height and a size, and we want architects to be able to work with it, and we want clients to come in here and be successful with it. And it's that simple. And it's not that clear. It's just not that clear, and I just think we need to clarify it. That's all.
So Bonnie?
May I? Thank you. Getting back to the setbacks, before you had talked about not even a finite amount of setback because the flexibility would be affected too much in design. However, I like on this where there's a range given of setbacks, which gives a great degree of flexibility in design, so I'm very comfortable with having a range in the setback as proposed. For example, the front setback on the proposed consideration is five to 10 feet, so it could be in there, somewhere in there. It doesn't have to be exactly something, this or that. And the same thing for the side yard, five to seven feet. That's enough to actually plant some, something and not have some developer come in and throw us a bone and say, I don't have to have any setback, but I'm going to give you maybe three feet and put some potted, row of potted plants on the side for ornamentals. I do believe we should require some. Now, how we wish to do that, you know, a range is a way of addressing that. The other thing I wanted to mention is bring us to look at the Architectural Guild of South Orange County in Appendix E, which was basis for advice that they gave us about this. And if you look on page three of seven, four of seven, five of seven, it talks all about setbacks and, you know, and also on hedge barriers. If your commercial site is near a zone area that has residential, then they recommend a six-foot-high hedge. And so you need to have a setback that's reasonable enough to put, to plant a hedge if you want to have some nice separation. Landscaping can really make a nice separation. It's not only architecture. If you have vines growing up the side of a part of one building, maybe bougainvillea on the other, that's an area of interest. It isn't all just about the shape of the building. And then if you look at the setback in yard requirements, they recommend a setback of at least 10 feet. Well, on this alternate plan here, we don't have it that, it's a finite measurement. All of these are actually finite. But having a range of setbacks as on these proposed standards here for another choice, that gives a lot of latitude. So this Architectural Guild, which I believe is made up of 24 architects, here's another one building walls with the main entrance. Well, they want a 10-foot setback, but you add two feet if you're going up some more stories, and if it's a story that's 15 feet, then you add another foot. So that'd be up to maybe 14 feet of setback there. Pretty finite. These give you a range, and I think the architects can work with that.
Maybe staff can give us some insight into why they are proposing zero foot setbacks as opposed to, say, what we see in the proposed development in the number two there? You know, what's the motivation for that?
Sure. I think it is pretty consistent with your comments not too long ago, in allowing flexibility through the design process and leaning on the design guidelines as an important tool in dictating the outcome of the design process, right? So rather than have very rigid setbacks, in particular, in the back of the property, right? You're likely getting your parking back there, and to have a setback, how's that going to work with a parking garage opening? There are some limitations there with regard to that dynamic, how the main parking access is going to be likely facing the alley. You know, looking at, I mean, my experience looking at some of these projects is that if you have a very specific setback standard, the motivation of the developer is to make money, right? I mean, at the end, at the end of the line, right, is to make money on the project. Well, if you have a very specific setback limitation, let's say it's five feet, well, that's your starting ground now. Like, right now, they can go to zero, and they can scale it back. So there's some flexibility there to have, you know, articulation and work with courtyards and whatnot, but they can always go to that zero-foot setback as a last resort to have like a door or something. If you have five feet, they're going to be less, there's less options there because you're cutting into the floor area ratio the further you push away from the property line. So there's less and less and s- So there's less and less incentive to have that articulation, the less means to do it. Does that make sense?
It, it does. Is it possible to have, to say, define a zero, a, a zero-foot setback, but also say in our design guidelines, say something like, you know, you are required to put a certain amount of planted landscaping around the edges, for instance? Like, you know, whatever, five percent of your landscaping has to be planted around the edges.
What we typically do. You don't typically have a flexible standard in your zoning code. You want to have a more finite standard or whatever it is. And I think Chris is exactly right. The reason why we have zero in a downtown one is to maintain that street frontage. And also you have the zero between the buildings. But then these twenty percent, you know, open space areas, those are intended to create some variation, maybe some possibilities of courtyards and that kind of thing. And then the design guidelines can get specific, but we want to see a certain amount of landscaping because part of the goal in this district is to have, you know, buildings that provide a certain amount of greenery for heat control or whatever the reasons are. But those are the guidelines and that gives us ultimate flexibility. And all these are required to have discretionary reviews, so they'll all go through a process. That gives you as a, a commission, more flexibility to create a nicer project. When you have, when you squeeze the standards in and you have a FAR, you know, with one point five, I can tell you that there's going to be a very formulaic answer that architects are going to give you because they're going to be so constrained. And it's going to start to look really bad. So that, I think personally, from a professional's standpoint, I like the idea of putting the standards in where you have flexibility. And then maybe putting in more generally, if you want landscaping, you know, there's some standards here about, what is it, the twenty percent open space? That's where you put the standard in that indicates you want to have a certain amount of the site landscaped. But to say that at all, it has to be five feet off the, the front and five feet on the side and ten feet in the back, that may not make sense in all six situations because one size doesn't fit all, as we know. Each site is unique. So flexibility, I think, is better. You can meet the intent through the design standards and other means.
Well, let me ask, let me ask the, the commission and staff as well. Would it be beneficial for you to see, you know, not, you know, completely refined design guidelines, but some, some bullet points, something like that about change, potential changes to design guidelines that could go along with these zoning ordinances that might address the kinds of concerns that we have?
I, I needed to finish talking about what we were talking about before we get off course like we did the last time. And I just wanted to say, I know, that would be good, but before I forget it, I just wanted to say flexibility in the FAR might help in the design line. Why does it have to only be, we've already got a range for landscaping here. It's not finite, it's a range. And then maybe with allow a slight flexibility in the FAR. That would allow adjustability. And the other point I wanted to mention is, the way it is, is that this is not all commercial. It is highly residential, it appears. In fact, hypothetically, if we had a project that had, you know, more units that were residential than, than commercial, then it's really taken, taking a step backward for residential setbacks because if you look in the zoning code, depending on density, all the, the residential all has some setback. So it depends on what way you're looking at this. Maybe you need to decide, maybe you don't want residential so much there, maybe you would rather have commercial. But this shouldn't be all geared, be geared towards commercial if you want to put as many residential units in there as you want. Can't have it both ways.
Jim?
Michael?
You know, the recommendation by staff was to continue this discussion anyway. And I would like to suggest this, that we've all had a lot to say tonight. And I believe that we have a crack planning staff in this city that can handle this issue, given the fact that we've got some real good, solid feedback to these guys today. And I, I would suggest to let them come back and, and see if they can, you know, remaster this in a way that's simplistic, hits the goals that we want, maybe does creative stuff with the setbacks and all that. They're the experts. I, 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 I'm reluctant to want to, to cause a rezoning exercise right here because that's not my strength. But it's their strength. And I think what we're all trying to do is the right thing to get something that we can all live with and it's going to be the right solution. And above all, it's going to be a visionary for the, for this city. It's got to be the right thing. So I'm not sure that we can just do that right now, but I don't see a problem with continuing it and let, let, let this develop some more with our expertise.
Bart? What's the MU zone on Delmar?
It's MU three point oh in the general plan.
What are the setbacks?
Zero.
What's the height?
What's that?
It's the height.
Uh, it's now two-story, yeah.
So we are making. El Camino more restrictive than Delmar. And we're putting more requirements, it sounds like, on El Camino than Delmar.
What's two different streets, for crying out loud?
Well, that's what I'm saying. That is pedestrian-oriented. Zero setback.
No, no, it's not.
People love it. Could be better, but people love it. So I'm thinking, I think we've gotten off track a little bit here. Before we can even, I don't think we've given enough direction to staff to move because for me, the massing in the back is the, is the important thing, not the height, not the number of levels. Because you could have two stories back there, just as big as four stories. There's nothing to restrict you from doing that.
Look, we talked about the story and height, but we talked about.
Well, why, why are you even putting a story in there?
Well.
Height is the issue.
If we don't try to put this in some way of measuring, Bart is going to go all over the place and every time we're going to have to regurgitate it. It's not that difficult.
I deal with, I deal with, I deal with codes every day of my life. And these. And in most cases, the story isn't the problem, it's, it's the height. That's the major issue, the bulk. And I don't see on the back that it's really an issue as far as number of stories. I know maybe city council said that. I'd almost make the argument to try to convince them otherwise. But I, I don't think we've given staff the direction yet that they can go ahead and come up with solutions.
Well, I, I, I have a, I have a, I have a suggestion. Delmar, so totally different from El Camino Real. You can't compare the two as far as being pedestrian-friendly at all. The, I, I would suggest that staff takes development standards one, development standard two, does some blending and comes back to us with some compromise between the two. They're the experts. Let them come by, come back with something that, that makes sense to, to us from a development standard and a zoning standard. I don't like us to have to go to another area over here like design to say, you know, that this, this applies to this and that applies to that. We should have on the MU three, we should have before us something simple to look at when we are taking a look at a project. So. The El Cami, South El Camino Real, this portion of South El Camino Real is so different from other areas of San Clemente that that's why we're doing what we're doing here now, trying to make it of some sense. So I'm suggesting that we take a straw vote to see if we can have staff go back and blend these two together and come up with something.
Can I comment? At this point, I don't really know what to blend together. I mean, I appreciate all your comments, I really do, and I'm taking notes. We, we drafted code through two meetings, okay? We have a proposed ordinance right now. I think what we are looking for in tonight's discussion, are there any things in there that you want to change? Any particular things that you want to change? And if there are, I, first, I'd like you to highlight the standards that the commission doesn't agree with and take a vote on whether staff needs to go back and make changes. That would be helpful, that in itself, instead of looking at everything all over again. What, what things does, is the commission supportive of? What things does the commission want to change? Then if changes are desired, what, like, in the case of three stories or height, let's say that you only measure height, okay? Like, that, that's what we're proposing right now. As Jim mentioned, right now, we're proposing for the backside of the lots to be measured like we do elsewhere in the city. It's an average height based on where the buildings are. If you look at the front of El Camino Real, let me go back to this. Can we go to PowerPoint? Here we go. Let's go to. Like this, okay. So here, we're measuring the height from a very fixed point from the property line along El Camino Real. We don't do, do that anywhere else in the city. We did that special for this zone because there's unique circumstances that we're trying to address. The slopes might not be on every lot, but it's on most of them. So possibly we do the same thing along the alley. We say the height is measured from the alley. If we're concerned about how high the building could be above the alley, maybe that's what we do back there. There's different options, but that sort of dialogue would be helpful.
I think I can, I, I've heard enough that I can guess on what the direction is on some of this. And so what I'd like to do is maybe go through item by item and just get a straw vote on whether you want us to, as Chris has asked for, you know, changes to particular things. Clearly, there's an issue with the height, particularly along the alley. So let's start with that one as far as direction. And what I heard, and at least I heard Wayne say that he was concerned about anything that looks like above grade over three stories. So it's an appearance thing over, you know, nothing should appear to be more than three stories. And we can see if you, there's a consensus for us to go back and do that. That follows the idea of what I think the council direction was. And then after that, we can talk about whether people care about whether the, that mass of three stories is maintained, if it also should be three levels. Okay, can we do that?
That'd be helpful. I, I got to make one comment on that, though. If we go two stories on the alley and we step back somewhat and there's another one, another story going up, is that three stories? How far back do you have, I mean, it's going to get complicated here if we just don't give a height.
I think we just say three.
Go back ten feet and then go up again?
Big height.
Is that okay?
No more than three stories above.
Is it on the property line? You see my problem? If, if we go up from the property line and say a certain height or two stories, then he goes back ten foot or somebody goes back ten foot and goes up another story and goes back and goes up another story. How far do they have to go back?
So what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, and you, it's up to the planning commission to decide, but no higher than three stories above grade at any one point. That'll keep it to look like a three-story. From a distance, it might look like a four-story building if you look far enough back at it, but you really won't get that appearance. The idea is off the alley, I think the consensus, or at least the majority looks like that they want to have that three-story look off the alley.
And let's, let's make sure we're talking about the same thing when we say stories. Are you talking about a specific height limit, thirty-five foot, was it, oh, I'm sorry, was it thirty-foot plate line, whatever we have in there?
That's for two stories. It's for two stories and thirty-seven for three stories.
So when we say three stories in any location, we're saying no higher than thirty-seven foot.
There's two ways to regulate it. The one way to regulate it is to read forty-five feet, you know, conceivably could be a four-story building. So do you want us to lower the height limit to try and fit that three-story look in there? That's one way to do it. Do you want us to lower the height limit by just saying that there's no more than three levels allowed above grade plus the height limit? There's, so there's two options. Let's start with that.
Well, there has to be a setback.
Well, let's.
Well, that's, that's a whole nother issue.
Yeah, that's, that, I think that's, we, we, let's just handle that in a, in a separate conversation. So there's two ways of looking at this height, right? Why don't you repeat that again so it can be clear?
Okay, well, well, let's just start with this. Does everybody agree that we want to reevaluate the, the current set, the current height standard on, off the alley, which is forty-five feet average and a forty-foot plate line?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven plate line.
And that is, and that's an average of the slope?
You want us to reevaluate, what we can do, just to make it simpler, because I think we're getting tired, we can give you options, okay? But I just need consensus that everybody wants us to reevaluate the height standard off the alley. Right now, it's forty-five feet top of roof, thirty-seven foot plate line. And the concern is that you can get buildings that look or are actually more than three stories off the back alley. You got three and a half stories, four stories potentially, depending on the slope. So if, if what daylights off the alley looks like it's four stories, I'm kind of, I'm hearing that people are concerned about that.
Yes.
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 So. Do I have, let's just take a straw vote. Do you want us to reevaluate the height standard for the back of the lot? Yes or no?
I'm fine with forty, the thirty-seven feet.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Thirty-seven feet.
I want to.
I'm, yeah.
Where you measured from?
Yeah, I'm good with that, too. I'm, I'm, I think it's only going to apply to any, any exception would apply to a very small number of lots and then we get into questions of they can't do a parking, underground parking structure, so. Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with it, too.
Let me just take a straw vote. Third direction, not each individual's opinion. Let's just take a vote on it.
So the straw vote is, are we good with the thirty-seven-foot plate height standard from the alley that staff is currently proposing?
Period.
Period.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Raise your hand if, yes, one, two, three.
No.
No.
Three yes, two no.
No.
No way.
No.
Most important thing, most important thing is three stories.
I thought you said it was.
If we don't do that, then we're, we're right back to the.
Okay, so we, we have a, a three, Bonnie, what was your vote? Because I didn't.
Your vote was thirty-seven foot plate line.
Yeah, thirty-seven, yes. But that depending on where it's measured from. Is it from the property line?
Well, we're talking.
Why don't we say thirty-seven feet, but no more than three stories? Why don't we just move this along? Why do that? Because I don't, I don't want to have to deal with a three and a half story back elevation.
But if it's.
And that's what we're going to get.
If it's a thirty-seven foot plate line.
Well, we're going to get it.
And we can have architectural standards that say it can't appear to be three and a half sto, more than three stories from the alley.
Then, Jim, you're going right back to where we, where we are.
What is your?
I'm just trying to make it easy.
So am I, a thirty-seven foot plate, plate, plate line.
It's not done.
I, no, no. It cannot appear to be more than three stories in the alleyway.
I, I don't have a problem with that either. I think that's, that's perfectly fine. It can't appear to be that.
What I'm hearing is then we'll evaluate an additional standard, kind of like we have on the front, to apply off the alleyway, to keep it from, three levels off the alley.
Yeah.
Habitable area, so.
Okay.
Habitable area, are we talking? Because it's really important for me to make clear is, Jim had mentioned this. Right now, if a story is sixty percent or more below grade, it is not a story.
No.
Okay, that is what our code.
No, 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 no.
That's what our code says now. I'm just, I'm just, all I'm saying, wait, 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 please let me talk. Please let me finish what I'm saying. I'm saying that's what the code says now, so if the commission wants us to look at that, we would need to look at that, too. I'm saying that is part of the reason why a parking basement that is forty percent above the ground is excluded from a third story.
Chris, what I'm going to suggest is we do something similar to the front or like, you know.
Exactly.
We, we talked about having a step, a step, you know, like the first thirty feet, you have a step. So we'll be, we'll come back with some kind of an idea like that.
Do you have an idea, Jim?
No, I, I.
Let's not make it complicated.
Then never mind, you don't need another one.
Yeah. Whenever he gets up.
I, I think we're going to provide, we'll be able to provide you different options.
Okay.
Okay, to get up to that idea.
So that's staff's right here.
I don't want to say what the solution is because I really don't know, but we can give you several options.
See, I, I don't consider, consider a story underground, a, a space underground to be a story, okay? I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't.
Well, that's what we're saying.
Say that again?
I don't consider an excavation underground that you cannot see from the alleyway to be a story.
Well, you're going to see some portion of it. It's not going to be totally subterranean.
It could be.
The ramp, a ramp to get down to it's going to take the entire space.
I mean, look, all we, all we, all we and I want to do is have it three stories from the, from the alley and if we're going to keep going back to this other standard, it's going to go to three and a half stories.
Can I say something?
Then we're right back to where we.
So what's wrong with that?
Well, that's the problem.
Can I?
That's the problem.
Can I say something? Can I, can I say something? I think part of the reason why I'm confused is because if you are gonna have a basement for parking, you're cutting into the slope to have an opening to drive cars through. So you're gonna have building there. You're gonna see building by cutting into it. It's not, it, the ground is not going to stay the same. It's not gonna be how it is now. So if you go off the, the understanding like a residential basement where I am cutting down and the building is on top and no one can see it, that's not what it's gonna be there. There's gonna be a garage opening that you're going to see. And the council told us that they don't care about that. They said if it's below the level of the alley, they don't, that's not their concern. So we've been operating off, that's not the concern.
Well, a ramp's gotta get down there. I mean, we're not, we're not saying do it subterranean without a way of doing it. What we're saying is a subterranean basement garage parking isn't gonna stick up to another half a story. And that, and that's what you keep coming back to. And that's what we're saying we don't want. And hypothetically, we've seen that.
That is, that assumes that no matter what, you could always grade so that there is, what, do you think a parking basement? Twelve, fifteen feet maybe for a parking basement, twelve feet or something? But like, that assumes like the grade difference between the, the El Camino Real and the alley is always going to be steep, right?
No.
And what, what it's gonna mean, Chris, is that if you have, say this little part is sticking up right here on the ground, right?
Yeah.
And then, and this is the subterranean. So what it means is you're gonna have to step back a little bit. Before you get to the point where this is subterranean entirely. They're saying no higher than three levels above grade.
It's done all the time.
So whether we, we say, I have a problem with limiting, again, because of flexibility. I, I think the point is that you wanna establish a certain height here. It gives you the three story appearance, whether there's three levels or whatever, the, how they divide the, the box that it's contained within. It really doesn't matter that much.
No, why can't we just say, what, thirty-seven feet and not exceeding three stories? We're good with that, aren't we? If we're not good with it, Bart, then you're, then you're wanting more than three stories. That's what you're, well.
I'm a true believer that a basement is a basement. And if they step back two stories and go up another two stories or whatever, it's gonna be above grade, a height limit. We should step back, I agree with that.
I agree with that totally. So we need to create the envelope. And what happens inside that envelope, happens inside that envelope except along El Camino Real.
I, I think that you can achieve the same thing by what you did in the front, where's the front? See how you have this limitation on two levels here? You could have a limitation on three levels here, which, which means in this case, if this was, this is slightly above three levels, right? Because this is subterranean, which means that you would have to step this part right up, back right here to the point where this gets subterranean entirely.
That's fine with me.
Okay, that's what I was saying. The appearance is still gonna be high, but what is that, how big is that setback? It's gonna be whatever the slope of the lot is, are we established? But some lots go level and then drop off steeply.
We've already agreed that there's only a few of these that are gonna even be in that direction. And most of them are gonna be three stories, boom.
But don't you wanna setback? Don't you wanna setback?
From the alley?
Yeah.
I, I, what, what I don't want is it to be higher than three stories from. Now, if, if, what Jim just said makes perfect sense to me.
Say it again.
You'll say it, say it back.
Well, that just, you can't be at any one point more than three stories above grade. I'd rather, personally don't wanna say stories or lo- these.
Right.
Levels and stories or whatever they are. I just wanna say that we can, we can lower the height from forty-five feet off the to whatever number we think is appropriate, forty-two or forty.
Well, it's actually, zoom to the roof, top of roof.
Top of roof, we'll lower it.
Thirty-seven to the plate.
Okay, going off what you're saying, um, can I propose something? Um, essentially that therefore no point on the, on the lot, on the, you know, backside of the lot, can the height see thirty-seven feet from um finished grade? Or from existing grade, original grade?
That sounds.
Yeah, existing grade. And therefore, if that's the height, then you have, would have to step it back if it goes over thirty-seven feet.
So I think we're agreed that staff is gonna go and give us another alternative for measuring the alley side of the building, is that correct?
And I, I like what Jim's talking about, which is good for Al, and it's good for the alley.
We'll compare and contrast, you know, next time.
And we, we wanna comply with the spirit here too, that Wayne said it, he wrote the, he, he read the, the, the review from the city council, three stories.
Okay. Wayne, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, but there were others proposed standards here.
Well, then, okay, I wanna go to the next.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that gives us, I think, enough direction at least to come back with some options. The other thing I heard was, um, it's kind of related to landscaping. The, the idea of setbacks is related to landscaping and, and just open space on the site. Would you like us to provide other options in terms of the development standards for the required setback or open space area?
Well, I do. I, I, I don't wanna have to go to another document to see, you know, what the setbacks are gonna be for MU three point two. You know? And it has to be simple, has to be something that's, that's there, but maybe you can come up with something different. But this zero setback here just is, is, is just not acceptable to me at all. When you put zero setback, it's an alarm bell going off.
Can I comment on that? I think, I think that I, I understand that it's vague, right? Cause there's no specific limit. I think we've talked, we've gone back a couple of times and we've talked about the open space limitation, the, the minimum lo- open space. Essentially, that's an, it is a setback. You have to put open space on the ground floor. But it's allowing the, the designer to put that open space in different areas depending upon the, the site characteristics. Like if you have a building next to you, it might not make sense to have a setback in the middle of the property that no one can see. Instead, you have a courtyard in the front of the building. So there's more relief on the front of the building versus the side, which is directly adjacent to another building. So it provides that flexibility, but it is a finite amount. You have to meet a minimum.
But can I explain that another way? Uh, because I, I think there's a solution here. Wayne, what we're saying is that you can have a zero setback of the portion of the elevation of the facade on the street side and then go right into a courtyard where you're gonna have, you know, a lot of open space and a lot of feel of setback. So yes, it's zero in a certain area, but now you've got this courtyard going into it. I think I'm getting this right.
Yes, yeah.
That, that gives you the best of both worlds. This is not just boom, right, right flat across the front. But if you, if you go to, to the, to the front and a portion of it, then it gives the designer and the building an opportunity to open up somewhere else so that it's not, not just blank, zero curb cuts.
E- e- except for the fact, if I may, except for the fact that if you have an interior courtyard within hypothetical situation, you don't have that feeling of, 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 of a, of a courtyard or a patio in the front, which creates pedestrian activity. And so that is important. I, I'm, I'm not real, I'm not real interested in interior courtyards where it doesn't provide for pedestrian activity in the front.
I, I see what you're saying, but if it's just a recess like the hotel, a patio courtyard. These aren't, all these lots aren't huge. And I mean, we're not gonna be able to do a whole lot with courtyards and all in some of these lots. But that's really what the design guidelines are asking for. An interior courtyard has nothing to do with the street scene. And the, the guidelines are saying it does have to have something to do with the street scene.
It, it needs to be in the front, it needs to be a patio in the front that creates pedestrian activity. It cannot be an interior courtyard in hypothetical situation.
I don't, I don't think you're gonna get pushback on that. How would people feel about this if we gave direction to staff to come back with uh one or two standards that allow for just what Wayne was talking about? In other words, you know, you can't just dedicate it all to an interior courtyard with no street scene, for instance. You know, some, some kind of standards that, that explain how that happens. And, and if that involves changing the setbacks, you know, maybe you can give us one or two options, you know, other than a zero, just a plain zero setback.
Sure, we can come up with something like.
That would help to guarantee just the kind of thing that Wayne is, is describing.
I think we even have, if you can um bring out the general plan comments on those kind of things, design guideline that we already have that would apply.
I can take a look at what we have in the.
I think we've got a lot of things that already apply.
Sure, I, like, right off the top of my head, might be a minimum amount of the open area has to um directly face the front of the exterior, the, the property line, has to butt the property line.
There you go.
So.
Street, street facing property line, street facing property line.
So you got the direction on, you need on that one?
You know, again, this is the spirit of what we're trying to do. And so you get the spirit, you guys can craft it and make it work, so.
Yeah, tha- that's what I need. Just what, what the vision is, as Commissioner Eagleson said, what's the vision of, of the area?
So it sounds like we've given you two pieces of direction regarding the back and the landscaping, street scene setback here.
Those are the major ones.
Well, no, we have parking.
Parking.
Parking needs to uh be related to the sta- standards per the city code.
I think that's, I've never heard anybody say anything different, except for.
Well, except for, may perhaps a hypothetical situation.
Well, no, I think that that's what we were proposing in the standard, right?
Yes, the.
And we haven't gotten any direct, previously when we reviewed this, I don't think we got any direction, so that's what we're proposing.
And, and no, no doors on garages inside the parking lot.
I'm sorry, did you have a question about that?
Just, just to make sure we're clear on that, i- if there's a, if there's a garage door that leads to a, a, a subterranean parking garage.
No, that's fine, but individual parking spaces cannot have, be a garage with a door.
In other words, a garage door inside of the garage.
I, I'm, I'm gonna have to chime in on that. Single-family residences have two-car garages. And we're not requiring them to have no garage door because they do the same thing.
This is not a single-family house.
But it's three units or whatever the number of units. I, I.
It's gonna be used for storage, pure and simple, and the cars will be parked on the street. Do we take a straw vote on that?
I just think that's an amenity that, uh.
It's a, it's a wonderful amenity for storage.
Well, I just, I would point out that you do have multifamily buildings that have garages that are directly accessed from the exterior, not in a main garage with, with uh doors. So you would be also limiting that option, which would be odd. You're, you're basically encouraging carports.
Well, no, all right, an interior garage, like we're talking about, can, should not have doors in, in the interior. But if, but if it's accessed from the street, a, a specific garage, then that's different.
So, so maybe, uh, maybe the direction for staff could be to look into ways to um discourage people from using their parking as storage. You know, maybe that's no garage doors, maybe there's another answer to that as well.
Okay.
Cause that's really the question is, is don't, don't use it as storage.
Another way to put it would be no more than one garage door between the outside and the inside.
We'll, we'll wrap our head around that one.
Yeah, I, I, I see so many.
I could really go around circles on that one.
Condition, I mean, garages all along the alley, just head-in, straight-in garages down the alley can have garage doors, roll ups. But if you provide them with a parking structure to park in, they don't get that.
That's right.
Why? The guys with the straight-in garages can put their stuff in there.
I, I don't know if we're, I don't know if that's gonna be the case along El Camino Real.
No, I'm talking along the alley. What, what, what my concern would be is in single-family homes, say a residential low area, there's just more general parking available than in a more higher density area like what we're talking about right now. And in that higher density area, you want people using garages and parking for their cars, not for some other purpose. So that, so that we free up as much as we can of the street and that, street parking and that sort of a thing. That's, that's my thinking on it. I see that where I live as an issue. One of Wayne's biggest peeves on our walk was the parking structures. And looking into them and seeing all the cars when we walked, the mixed use.
When we walk the mixed use, looking into those things. Now, these are gonna be from the rear.
Right.
But looking into those, if we're really concerned about those residents and who uses this alley, the same um concern should apply. I mean, we're gonna be a lot better on the fronts of these use, along El Camino with the mixed use now that we're on the lots that don't have curb cuts. I mean, it's gonna be a much nicer environment than what we, we walked. And um there's a case where maybe somebody provides an additional two parking stalls for storage. Does that mean they couldn't have garage doors on the rest of the?
Well, we could, we could make a condition that in fact they provide for storage inside the, um.
Now, that you can do, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
It's really a code enforcement issue because they're required to have.
Code enforcement isn't gonna go out there and do this.
I mean, that, that in itself, like, you know, that's, that's the important part of writing codes though is it's gotta be enforceable. And if, if you can't see the garage, I'm just, it's something to consider, it is something to consider.
Let me just, let me, why don't we take a straw vote? And just ask the question, do we want staff to go and investigate uh, uh, ways to have people, um, uh, sorry.
Discourage, like you said before, discourage people from storing in it.
To discourage people from storing in their parking spaces.
Well, that's, that's too broad, that's too broad. I, I'm, I'm all for saying no, no garage doors in the interior.
Okay, I have an idea, how about?
With, with the exception of storage here.
Well, why don't we?
With the exception of storage, well, that, what's, what's the definition of a storage area?
Well, it's, it's, it's almost ten-thirty and we're not gonna define that right now.
I just.
So, okay, go ahead.
I just wanna confirm that the spirit or vision of this is essentially what I'm hearing is garage openings that are not facing out towards a alley or right away like streets.
See, I don't know if we wanna give that direction to you or not yet, cause we have.
I'm hearing that the issue is storage.
No, the issue is parking.
The issue is parking, parking.
Issue is using parking for storage.
Yeah. I'd like to take a straw vote on.
Look at a potential solution from preventing that from happening.
Well, that's just too broad.
Okay, so what, what do you want, what do you want the vote?
I think I know what to do.
I, I, I just, I don't want any garage doors on interior parking areas.
Okay, take a straw vote.
So all in favor of having staff come back to us with a recommendation for that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Carries.
Did you, did you?
I think I understand what the mission is. I, when I hear you say interior parking areas.
I'm sorry, I did not get that.
Yeah, and, and I gotta throw one more concern at him.
Two, two.
One thing at a time, one thing at a time.
I'm abstaining from that because there may be some variables we don't understand.
All right, so, so staff doesn't have direction from us from that. That, that straw vote fails because we didn't get a majority.
One, one more, just how these things snowball. You got a surfboard, you hang it in the rafters of your parking space. Without any garage door security, what do you do with it?
Well.
I mean, I, I see that this thing snowballs and um, you know, where does it end?
Then maybe we should require that they make, that, that the developer has adequate storage for each unit.
That's something that's done.
That's, that's, that is not, that is not a parking, that is not a parking space.
Yep, it's, that's done quite often for apartment complexes and all.
Do you wanna propose?
I run across that all the time.
It seems like a general thing.
Do you wanna propose a straw vote to that?
Yes, let's, let's do a straw vote to that.
To tackle storage and mixed use projects.
What's the, what's the?
That's the straw vote that Wayne is, the straw vote that Wayne is proposing, correct me if I'm wrong, is that staff come back to us with a proposal for requiring all residences to provide storage.
For, for each unit.
For each unit. Okay?
And, and, and it can, and it cannot be a parking space.
Well.
I, I think, I, my comment would be that that is an overall, more of a general requirement that would, should be applied across the board.
that would, should be applied across the board, and it should be, you know, addressed in, for individual projects as you review them, or in our more general standards in Phase Two, so that it applies to all mixed-use and all, you know, single-family and, or all mixed, mixed-use and multifamily residential, so that we, you know, treat everybody fairly rather than pick on the MU three point two zone for this.
So, and that's, but that's coming to us sometime in the future, right? The full mixed-use?
Yeah, and you can, and in the meantime, is, you know, projects come in for review, multifamily, we reviewed one tonight, for instance, if that's a concern, you can add that in as a requirement.
I don't, I don't want to do that. We're here, we're here today, tonight, to come up with standards for this. I don't want something left over here in left field for this. And, and what I was proposing before is that the developer is responsible to provide for storage for each unit, and that cannot be a parking space.
So, so the straw vote is, is that we are, we are asking staff-
Hang on. All the projects, multifamily apartments, all, do storage above the tow-in of the parking stall.
I'm concerned with MU three point two.
And so what we're saying, I am, too. So, you're saying they can't even have a storage pod above the hood of the car?
If, if they want to.
But what we just said, you can't have any storage in the parking space.
Well, we can make it's an exception to that for that.
That will inhibit the car from-
And they're not going to-
Being in a parking space?
No.
How about that?
No.
Well, the, the straw vote is, is to have staff look into requiring storage for these residences in multi-use areas, to come, come back to us with a recommendation for that that we could take a look at. Is that something that people are-
For, for each unit.
In multi-use areas.
In multi-use areas for each unit. Is, is everyone, so, and that's, and that's, we're not certifying that, we're just asking staff-
Yes, I'm good with that.
To go and come back and give us a proposal on that, that we can then look at.
Right.
Right?
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
So, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Sure.
So, you know.
That was easy.
That was easy.
All right, what else?
Pretty much it.
I think that's pretty much it.
Oh, what, actually, I-
I didn't have anything that I needed to clarify about that.
I think there's a cup, there's initially, Commissioner Olin, you had brought up Heather's comments regarding clarity and what the commission wanted in terms of the next-
I think we got that.
Presentation.
I think we got that through the height stuff, that was what we were doing.
Yeah, I think, I think we're going to-
Just the height stuff, that's, that's the only thing that was confusing.
Yeah, that was the biggest area, I think, I think what you're going to come back with is, should address that, is that-
Do we need anything that would preclude side entrance into the parking structure when we want it in the alley?
No.
No, I would want more flexibility inside, side stiffer.
So, if we are through with our discussion, is there a motion to continue this?
Well, we're going to have a new planning commission, most likely, in July. We need this to come back to us in June.
If we do, I, I don't know if we can have, it might be something like this, revisiting the topic.
We'd have, we would follow up on this particular discussion, we can do that.
We could follow up on it and vote on it.
We probably can't get all the environmental on the maps.
We can't get all the environmental?
Everything else needs to be done.
Okay, but we can at least vote on what we talked about this evening, is that correct?
Yeah, you can continue this discussion to the seventeenth.
And for a vote, on what we're talking about, because we're going to, we're going to have, most likely, you know-
It's not binding until you-
Right, there would only be a straw vote.
Why is just a straw vote?
Because this is part of a larger amendment.
This is a whole general plan amendment, and, and that whole general plan and zoning amendment isn't going to be ready until at least July eighth.
Well, let me ask the city attorney, can we, can we bifurcate this and do part of it as far as a final vote of what we've discussed this evening on June the seventeenth?
Yeah, planning commissioners, the, the, the driving factor for me legally is, is, is the environmental analysis that accompanies this. We can't have any approvals until the sequel is done for the project. I, I'm not entirely sure what the status of that is, but even if we could bifurcate this, we would have to have a sequel document prepared and ready for approval on the date that, that, that the bifurcated portion was before the planning commission. That's, that's, that's what drives the entire process, we simply can't go forward without the sequel document being, being finalized, if you will.
Well, this was always planned for the seventeenth, I don't know what changed in the meantime.
There were external circumstances that-
Well, what are those external circumstances?
It's a personal issue. So, I don't know, the answer to that is since we didn't have any environmental, we, uh, plan to bifurcate the project, we would have to come up with an environmental-
The zone doesn't exist.
What's that?
The zone doesn't exist.
Yeah, so it would be, yeah, we would have to do an environmental process, and it would take too long, we don't have enough time in two weeks to get that done.
So, we could, we could continue it, but all we would, to, to the seventeenth, but we would only be continuing our discussion, and we would, it sounds like, inevitably be, be continuing it on the seventeenth until the eighth. So, the question is, is continue it till the seventeenth or continue it till July eighth?
They can't have it right.
Well, you can have a, a discussion on the seventeenth, you know, to allow us to come back, I mean, do you guys feel like we can even come back that quickly with this? I guess we don't do.
The only thing that might take more time is the garage thing. Frankly, I mean, that's more nuanced.
I'd rather make, I'd rather make sure that when you get back, we could, we got something that we could get some real clarity on.
And we do want to do it right, we don't want to rush it and get it wrong.
So, do we have a motion?
If we, if we had discussion on this on the seventeenth, at least had a straw vote on the seventeenth, it would provide direction to the, to the planning commission in July for what we have decided, on this, on this, on these specific issues here, which is a bifurcation of it. And I think that's important to at least, with the new, if, if in fact, we have new members on the planning commission, that in fact, they, we've set a direction for them. I think that's, I think that's reasonable.
Well, I, I want to pause on that a little bit, because I don't, I'm not sure we would be taking a, a straw vote on something that was incomplete, we wouldn't have the, the environmental information, that sort of thing.
Absolutely, we're bifurcating it.
As a, well, we're not, we, we're not bifurcating it, we, we would, we have to vote on the whole package, right? So, if we, if we made a vote to say, well, incoming planning commission, we want you to be, you know, we want you to, you know, follow this vote, we would be doing that without all of the information that we should have for the full vote. But I'll, I'll also say, we've, we've had this problem before, and it's, it's, it's the inevitable result of the fact that we all have limited terms and that sort of thing. We did the general plan, and we had a, a similar issue, we had people who'd worked on the general plan for a long time, their terms ended, a month or so later, we voted on the general plan, and the people who came, in fact, you were one of the people who came on at that point. So, and you, you know, you got down, you put your nose to the grindstone, and you studied-
And it was difficult.
Yes, and it was-
And it was difficult, that's why I'm saying that perhaps we shouldn't make it as difficult this time around for new members of the planning commission to come in, at least they have some general direction of what we had discussed before.
But they'll, they'll, they'll have that, they'll have the minutes of the meeting, they'll have the videos, they'll have, you know, all that sort of a thing, so that they can catch up.
Which to even sit in on that, they have to watch, on the subject.
To vote on it, right.
Yeah.
I, I just would prefer that we have a straw vote on, on these specific issues on the seventeenth to set direction for the planning commission, whatever it may be, in, in the first meeting in July. So, I'd like to continue this until the, to continue this discussion with, with a straw vote on these issues that we have discussed for June the seventeenth.
If, if the only reason that we would be continuing this, I have no problem with continuing this, is to continue, you know, some discussion, you know, I think that, that's, that's fine. But if our reason for continuing it is to give a straw vote based on a subset of the total information, and give a, give a straw vote on everything based on just that subset of information, then, then I couldn't support that.
What's the feeling of the rest of the commissioners?
So, you don't think you'll have a complete assessment by the seventeenth? Is your judgment-
If you ask us to do it, we'll do our best.
No, I, I know you'll do your best, but is it, do you think it's an overwhelming process?
Well, I don't think it's going to, I think we can come up with some options by the seventeenth to give you, to consider.
We could come up with options, but it, it would just be something kind of like the staff report, and the, the most, you know, the most important thing is that we keep moving forward, you know, if we are going to try to make an action on July eighth, then I, I don't have concerns that we can put a couple of things together and still meet that goal, if, if that's what you're asking.
So, we can, you can put something together for us for July seventeenth and those specific issues-
June, June seventeenth.
Excuse me, June, June seventeenth, and those specific issues that we just talked about, and you're going to be looking for direction, and we can get back, and we can have straw polls on that, that's fine, I, you know.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, I thought you wanted, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted a straw poll on kind of a whole general plan amendment.
No, 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 just on what we have specifically discussed this evening.
Yeah, no, I, I'm sorry, I don't have any problem with that, I misunderstood.
If it's taken, tell us.
It just gives, it just gives an indication of what we have talked about.
If the commission's okay, if, if, say, something is drafted, and it's, it's understood that the language could be, you know, change a little bit, as the ordinance is put in the, you know, full form with all the other amendments, then I'm not so concerned with putting things-
I think what Wayne only wants to do is just establish the direction.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There's nothing wrong with that.
So, is there, do we need a motion?
I, I made a motion.
My second. Second.
Continue the seventeenth.
Continue the seventeenth with discussion and a straw vote of what we have specifically discussed this evening, and hopefully in English.
It's moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously.
And then just a quick question, on what we were sent by city council, when they sent it back to us, what were they reviewing? The whole MU three document?
What, you mean a general plan amendment?
Yeah.
They reviewed, it was like, seven or eight different areas of town that they had concerns with, weren't quite reflecting what they thought they wanted to improve in those areas.
Okay, was the direction to just look at the rear of these buildings and come up with a solution for that, or was it to go through this whole process?
Well, we had to go through the MU three point two zoning process and everything.
Oh, so, so that wasn't in front of them? That's what I was asking.
No, they didn't get into any of it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
It was just, it was just, their concern was that the height limit that was adopted for this zone in the general plan didn't reflect what they thought they would give them in direction of.
Okay, clear.
Okay, we have no new business or old business, are there any reports of commissioners and staff?
Don's not here for it.
Don's not here to talk about coastal. All right, does someone-
Anything on traffic or whatever you were-
Oh, we, we will have our first meeting of Phase Two of the Mobility Committee on Monday, and there is a agenda posted for that.
You know, just taking a look at the-
Taking a look at the traffic, and, and going up, on the freeway, it doesn't seem